Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining tonight's meeting with the Tacoma Park City Council. There have been no changes to the agenda tonight where we will be discussing a resolution approving a fee waiver for the use of the auditorium as well as discussion, our continued discussion of council priorities. We will also have a legislative update, and that will be early in the meeting, where we will hear from our lobbyists in Annapolis and CICOT. On Wednesday, February the 5th, the council will meet at 7:30. We will have a proclamation recognizing Black History Month, legislative update, as well as a presentation from the State Department of Assessments and Taxations, a presentation on the assessment process. We will also have a presentation on the quarterly financial report for Q1. We will be voting a resolution adopting the council priorities, and we are tentatively slated to have a work session on the board and committee appointment recommendations. On Wednesday, February the 12th, the council will meet at 7:30. We will have a legislative update as well as a consent agenda, resolution providing for appointments to boards and committees. We will have a work session on the capital improvement program of the CIP, the equipment replacement reserve, the fleet review, as well as the street maintenance. On Friday, February the 14th, is Valentine's Day, and on Monday, February the 17th, is President's Day. City offices and facilities are closed Sunday and Monday in recognition of the President's Day holiday. And so with that, I am going to move, I just want to check to see if our lobbyist, Anne Seacott, is on the line?
I am here.
Wonderful. So with that, I'll turn things over to Anne, who will walk us through the latest legislative update.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. So we are, this is hard to believe, we're still in January, to be honest. It has seemed like a very long session so far, but we're getting into the groove of reviewing bills and making decisions on the city taking positions and weighing in on certain bills. We are weighing in on bills related to traffic safety, related to environment and energy efficiency, and even some bill, a bill related to the State Department of Assessments and Taxation, and some procedural things that are important to the city. So there is a lot more to come. We are coming up on bill introduction deadlines. So Monday, the 3rd, is the Senate introduction deadline, which means by mid next week, we will see the overwhelming majority of Senate bills that will be introduced. The deadline for the House is a week from Friday, so the beginning of the following week, we'll see the majority of the House bills. We are certainly suspecting that there may be a more than usual number of late filed bills in reaction to things that may be happening at the federal level. There certainly has been great consternation about some of the very recent actions being taken by the Trump administration, and so there is a lot of reacting to that, obviously in the community, throughout the state, as well as here in Annapolis by lawmakers. So we are going to be seeing, we know we're going to be seeing legislation in response to and in, to preempt some things. We're hoping that, we hope to be able to preempt things that we are concerned are going to be coming from the federal government, and we may end up seeing things be introduced late because of new things that come up from the federal government. So it's going to be a little bit of a different year, I think, in the legislature this year, responding to a lot of the external things. So those are the, those are my highlights for this evening. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Anne. Councilmember Schlegel.
I'm sorry, my mic was on back.
Okay. Perfect. Any, any questions for Anne? I know that we've been busy getting testimony out. There was a bill that went forward, some language went forward in testimony that would eliminate the need for the engineering study associated with lowering speed limits. So thank you to the working group on legislation for working fast to review all of these bills and really helping us to move a lot of the language forward so that we can make sure that our presence is known. Councilmember Hanzak.
Anne, you mentioned that there's a lot of possible, there will be some late insertions based on some of the things that are happening. Is there any way, or is there any need for us to be ready to collaborate on any of those that you're seeing coming down the pipeline that we might be uniquely positioned to support at the state level?
So, I mean, I know of a very great concern to the city are issues around our immigrant neighbors, and I think that, you know, that will be something that will, we haven't seen the protection-oriented bills yet. So, but we'll be seeing everything, the expected bills we're going to see very soon. So, you know, I think that that is certainly something that the city is going to want to pay very close attention to, and so we're going to be getting as many details as possible and collaborating with allies on those particular issues. But, you know, I think that, that some of the other, I don't know if, I don't know if I know all of the expected legislation, again, sort of to either preempt or react to the federal government at this time. We'll know a whole lot more next week.
Okay. Thank you so much, Anne. I'm not, uh, Councilwoman Schlegel, did you have a question?
Now I do, yes. Just so that folks watching could hear, you referenced a State Department of Assessments and Taxation bill, and just because some people have been concerned about assessments being up or down in odd ways this year, could you elaborate any on what that legislation entails?
So it's a rather procedural issue around the State Department of Assessments and Taxation providing to local governments the annual constant yield rate, and according to their testimony, they, most jurisdictions and county and municipal governments don't use that information, so they don't want to be statutorily mandated to continue to provide it automatically. And the city does use it, the city of Tacoma Park does use it. So we weighed in on that bill explaining why, you know, we want that to continue, that we need that. So we're going to be having conversation about how we make that happen, how we guarantee that, as that still provides that information to the city.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Well, Anne, those are all of the questions that we have, and I know for sure that many of us will continue to be in contact with you over the course of the week regarding additional bills that we want to weigh in on. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too. Okay, we're going to move to public comments. Do we have any public comments this evening? Hold on one second, let me get your mic. There you go.
Good evening, I'm Sue Miller, Ward 3. I'm guessing we're all feeling kind of dazed and confused this week. Nevertheless, I feel there is an urgency in following up on the ARPA funds now before we lose Deputy City Manager Andrew Bolduc. I believe Mr. Bolduc is uniquely positioned to give a final report on the ARPA funds and frank advice on the process. Over the years, there have been a number of updates about ARPA funds moving from one place to another. I understand that some of that was necessary, given the need to spend those funds on deadline. However, for the sake of transparency, accountability, and lessons learned, we need both a broader and deeper understanding of how these funds were originally allocated versus how they were spent. Unfortunately, the ARPA website pages have not been updated in a couple of years, and so we really need help in understanding this. I ask that Mr. Bolduc present a very straightforward list of where the funds were allocated originally by city council. Unfortunately, this is not easy to find on the website now, and then next to that, a very clear list of where the funds were actually spent. For instance, I'm interested in whatever happened with the Community Navigators Program, and did ARPA fund community broadband, or did that become redundant? Did ARPA fund the mental health unit, or is that going to come from the county now? Were the emergency eviction funds ever used, and by how many households? How much of the social services funding was spent as originally planned overall? And was there a shortfall in city revenues caused specifically by the pandemic that needed to be filled with ARPA funds or not? Those of you who were on the council at the start of the pandemic remember that there was a very complex and deliberate process to decide how ARPA funds should be allocated with staff, council, and multiple resident organizations weighing in. So I assume that you, the council, want a clear, final accounting of the changes to those allocations, a chance to discuss publicly what we have learned, and updated records to inform us going forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other general public comments this evening?
Colleen Cordes, Ward 1. For what it's worth, I just wanted to say that at this really challenging time for our nation, I recognize it can be a very challenging time to be an elected local official, and how grateful I am that we have a strong, experienced mayor in office, and that we have a new, strong council group, and a very competent, experienced staff. I feel like our community is in good hands, and just want you to feel that your community stands behind you too at this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other general public comments in the room? Any comments online?
We may have.
Yes.
Mary Machu is online.
Hi, Mary Jane.
Thank you, hi. Please, one of you are going to help my son. He is heartbroken by the anti-D E I crap that this, the current president has promoted. He says, he said, "Mom, no way I can get a job now." He is, I'll tell you, my son is biracial, he's got autism and attention deficit, and he looks Hispanic. As a matter of fact, last week, he said he wasn't allowed, they locked him up from being into a 7-Eleven store because he wasn't white. He said he had a white guy in the store, but not him. So he has to deal with this, but no one's helping. He was born here in 1985, but no one's helping him. And I wish I could tell Anne about the development of Disabilities Administration. I've been fighting with them for 22 years. I just found out from the foundation that they were supposed to give, every year, they're supposed to give him a report, a lengthy report. They never have at one time in 22 years as they've given me a report. Now I find out that they've been lying all along. But, I mean, as far as I can see, the Democrats are about as bad as the Republicans. Now the Democrats are going to say, "I heard that the mayor, the governor is planning to get rid of like 30 million from the DDA." I mean, come on, how come whenever there's something that's getting cut, we're always the ones that get cut? Why? Why? I'm just really angry, and it's not fair, and I'm sorry, and now you try to take my house with gentrification, and I have, I seem all you care about are the non-disabled immigrants and the rich white people. That's the things, all you care about in this town. I'm sorry. That's, that's who you seem to care about the most. And, and, and it's just really, really, I have a black friend who was a crossing guard here in Garland, got diddy twat, and she's a nice person, and we were trying to help getting this, this housing credit through. It's very difficult, it's very confusing. And by the way, thank you, Cindy, for agreeing to us be our guests on February the 6th, I appreciate that. Parents of Special Needs Adults, I formed that out of because I was so angry. I started Parents of Special Needs Adults 10 years ago, but that, nothing's happened, and I'm starting getting angry, I'm sorry, but I'm getting angrier and angrier as time goes by and nothing is done. And I'm sorry, why are we always the ones that's kicked to the curb? I'm sorry. Thank you, and have a good afternoon.
Thank you very much, Ms. Machu. We appreciate your comments this evening. Okay, hold on one second. I just want to ask my colleagues to provide me with the opportunity to speak to our residents and kind of go a little bit out of turn, if that's all right with everyone. I'm going to be candid, this has been a hellacious week. There has just been attacks on every front, from our immigrant community to our LGBTQIA community, to people who, such as myself, people of color, through the elimination or the attempted elimination of D E I programs, not only within the federal government, but as it is trickling down and out to different companies and organizations throughout our country. Times are hard, but I think it is really important for the residents of the city of Tacoma Park to know that our city is here, we're here to support you, we're here to provide the resources that we have available within our legal limitations to provide to you, and with everything in my power, you are safe here. I want to encourage folks to take a look, there was a blog that was just released, just reminding us all as a community about what it means to live in the city of Tacoma Park, and what it means in terms of our sanctuary city laws, and what we provide. And I just want to, folks will bear with me, because I do think that I want to make sure that people are not, I'm not going to be able to say, "Don't be afraid," right? Because that's a real emotion, given everything that's going on. But I do just want to make sure that people understand that in the city of Tacoma Park, our police officers do not help with enforcing federal immigration laws that lead to deportation. I need people to understand that our police and workers cannot ask about residents' citizenship or immigration status unless it's required by federal law, and that, those are very unique cases. You're applying for a job to be a police officer in the city, or maybe you are applying for a passport, right? Those are the only instances where we would ask for your immigration status. City workers cannot share information about a person's citizenship or immigration status with anyone unless required by law, and we cannot discriminate against anyone based on their citizenship or immigration status. So I want people to know that in the city of Tacoma Park, we are well within our legal rights to say we are not supporting ICE in the city. Now, we don't have the ability to prevent ICE from coming into our community, right? We cannot intervene in an ICE investigation, but what we can do is making sure that we are aware of what's happening and what's transpiring in our city. We can make sure, and we are making sure, that we are in full contact with various partners across the county and at the federal level, so that we understand when there are instances of ICE being in our community. We can provide a little bit of clarity around the rationale. We've received a good, good knowledge on good service to know that the city of Tacoma Park has not been identified as a target for raids or sweeps, so that, as far as we know, is not what we are expecting to happen in the immediate future in the city of Tacoma Park. But I would not be doing my job as mayor if I did not encourage our residents to please, 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 prepare yourselves and your families, particularly if you are an immigrant in this community. I've just released a blog that includes information about know your rights, so that people understand how to interact with ICE. We have been working with our business associations to make sure that our business owners have access to information to help them understand what to do should ICE appear in the workforce, in the workplace. We are also developing additional resources and working with nonprofit partners as a way to try to, again, make sure that we provide an accurate place for people to come to find information. So there will be a website, a webpage that will be released, along with additional resources that may be beneficial to residents in our community. So again, I wish that I could be addressing everyone today under better circumstances, but one of the things that I take comfort and solace in knowing is that our community's foundation, our bed- foundation, our bedrock, is on working collectively with one another and standing by each other during times of adversity. And I don't foresee this administration breaking that value that we have as a community. So if there are other things that I can do, that this council can do, we stand at the ready. Please, 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 check out the tacoma park.gov just for more information. We will be releasing information in a timely way, just to make sure that the community is aware of what's happening, because we understand there's just a lot of, there's a lot of anxiety, and we want to alleviate those, those concerns. And to residents in our community who are federal employees, I am also a federal employee, and I understand how stressful right now is as you are being inundated and hit from all fronts, around job security, around job focus, and many of us who are public servants, we've committed our lives to doing this, and to, to see that being questioned, our intent of why we have chosen to work for the government is also disheartening. I, I want to make sure that all of our residents who are federal employees know that we stand with you as well during this very challenging time. So with that, I'm going to turn things over, thank you very much, to members of council who may have any council comments this evening. I will be coming back with a whole list of fun stuff that I had an opportunity to do this weekend, but I wanted to make sure that I had an opportunity to address our residents as it relates to what is transpiring right now in America. Councilmember Dabala.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that, Mayor Circe. Deeply appreciate it. I, to Ward Two and other residents, I've been getting questions about all of this, and the other thing I've noticed is the willingness of people who live in this community to help and to step up and say, "What can I do?" And so I have great confidence in us as a community that will get through this. And if people have specific questions about where to go, what to do, who to help, how to help in any of these many difficult situations we find ourselves in, just contact me off The, the only other thing I wanted to say was that last week, so some, some regional work continues, and last week, the Metropolitan Cog Committee on Energy and Environment met to set, to set 2025 goals and to, to talk about what the actions are going to be for this coming, this coming year. If anyone's interested in that topic, you know where to find me. And the Chesapeake Local Government Advisory Committee also met to talk about our advice to the, to the Chesapeake program about the new set of goals and outcomes for the, for the Bay over the next 15 years, and I, I think some of what we talked about may already be out of date, given federal events, but, well, but that's proceeding. So I just wanted people to know about those two regional things. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Dabala. Councilmember Hanzak.
Thank you, Mayor. I first want to just say thank you to Mayor Circe. We had a Ward Five meeting on Sunday, and it was, it was actually quite well-attended this time. We had people from across the ward, and we had some of our Spanish-speaking community join us, which was really something unique that we haven't had yet at one of these community meetings. And through that process, we learned about a local organization, Chispa, who's actually going to testify in Annapolis about electric vehicles. I wanted to share that with my council colleagues. Really interesting discovery, and, and so delightful that the mayor could drop in. So, and with that, I just wanted to, if, if everyone doesn't mind, I wrote down exactly some of the words that the mayor just said about ICE, and I am going to speak Spanish for just a second, in case anyone happens to be listening. I know we have a very, very large Spanish-speaking community, and I know they're not the only immigrants in our community, but if, if you will allow me, I'm just going to say a few words, not everything that the mayor said.
Okay, mine is working. Mine is working.
Okay, thank you. Nuestra alcaldesa, Mayor Circe, dijo hoy en día que no estamos apoyando a ICE en la ciudad, pero no podemos intervenir con ICE en la ciudad, y es muy importante que sepan. Podemos asegurarnos de estar en pleno contacto con socios de todos el condado para comprender los casos en los que ICE está presente en nuestra comunidad, y podemos proporcionar claridad sobre el conocimiento. No hemos sido identificados como objetivo de redadas, y esto es muy importante saber, porque hay listas de ciudades que son identificados, pero no estamos en esta lista. Gracias.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Hanzak. Do we have any other council comments? Councilmember Landman.
Thank you, Mayor Circe, and thank you for the blog that you mentioned that you have made available. Perhaps our IT team tonight could put the information on the screen while we're talking for a bit, so that people who are, who might want to access it will see it on the screen, and that might spread it a little bit more widely. I just wanted to add to the list of people for whom our hearts are going out, all of the many federal government-adjacent people whose lives are also, and their work and the people that they serve are thrown into disarray by what's been going on. Everyone from rocket scientists to public health officials, those who are providing food, those who are providing vaccinations, everybody who has been experiencing this. It has been a tortuous week, and I know we can't fix everything in Tacoma Park, but at least we are going to have a Fix-It Clinic this weekend. So one last reminder that between 12:30 and 2:30 this Sunday, you should bring your broken little appliances and sewing projects to the library on New Hampshire Avenue, and hopefully your friends and neighbors can help you to fix those things. And this will be great for Ward One. Many of my neighbors in Ward One have not yet made their way to this distant, distant point in the city, so far from the library that we normally get to walk to. So I encourage Ward One folks to come to the Fix-It Clinic, because at the end of the clinic, I will have a council member chat in the library. Grace, to our librarian, Jessica, for granting me permission to do that, and maybe I'll set a trend for the rest of our council members. So I look for you this Sunday, where we can maybe fix the small things, while the big things remain a challenge. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Slagle.
Thank you, Mayor Circe. I just wanted to thank you, Sue Miller, from Ward Three, for bringing up the question about getting a final report on what happened with, what's happened with ARPA funds, leading to lessons learned. And I just wanted to say that I, I had a productive conversation with the deputy mayor, deputy city manager, and the city manager this past Monday, and so I will be able to put some preliminary understandings that I have into an update this week. But I, I am in accord that I think a, a good reporting of all of that will be very helpful for the community, and reassuring for people who advocated for things, and also a good way to, to see what we, what we can learn from it if we encounter tough times ahead. And speaking of tough times, as we all are, I don't think it ever hurts to have a little bit of poetry, and I just wanted to quote a couple of great songwriters in these tough times. One is our own DC's Marvin Gaye, in the song "What's Going On," and he said, "We don't need to escalate, for only love can conquer hate. You know we've got to find a way to bring some love in here today." And, and then Bob Dylan, in his song "Chimes of Freedom," he talks about being caught with a dear friend in a torrential and terribly frightening thunderstorm, and just a couple excerpts. "We ducked inside the doorway, thunder crashing, as majestic bells of bolts struck shadows in the sounds seeming to be the chimes of freedom flashing, flashing for the refugees on the unarmed road of flight." And that song came into my head today because I thought that we are experiencing the terror of shock and awe coming from the new administration, kind of like a terribly frightening thunderstorm. But if somewhere in ourselves we can duck into a doorway and recognize that sometimes these terrifying times are actually going to be openings to new freedom because of the way they bring us all together, that was my thought on that.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Slagle, for, for those words. See, okay, I have a few more. Folks would just indulge me for a quick second. First, I want to thank our city clerk and Christine Heidrich for putting on or structuring an amazing council retreat. I forgot to mention that on Saturday, we spent Saturday together. Yay! And it was a great opportunity to, to come together, to talk through, learn about ourselves and communication approaches and things of that nature. So I want to thank our staff that worked on, on organizing that. Also want to thank Small Things Matter for a fantastic kindness day that was at Piney Branch Elementary. It was packed. It was packed. The line was out the door, and it was such a wonderful way to just really absorb all of the goodness that is the volunteer spirit of the, the city of Tacoma Park residents. So thank you so much, Small Things Matter, for that event. Ward Five meeting, thank you, Councilmember Hanzak, for allowing me to crash your meeting. Funny story, I was running late because I have the kindness, and I still, I have to buy food, so I'm on my way home, and I was like, "Okay, I'm late, but if I see feet through the windows, then I will pull over." And I saw feet, and I said, "I'm going to pull over." And so I was able to participate as part of that meeting, and it was so eye-opening, all of the wonderful feedback that the Ward Five residents had, not just as it relates to their particular ward, but priorities for the city. So thank you so much for organizing that event. Thank you to the chief. I had an opportunity to participate, gosh, it was yesterday, maybe? I don't know what day of the week it is anymore, on the chief's advisory board, to speak to the chief's advisory board. So I want to thank the chief's advisory board for welcoming me and allowing me to provide a few words at the start of that meeting, but more importantly, for them providing additional feedback and suggestions on things that we may want to consider as a community as we are dealing with this ever-changing landscape in terms of immigration enforcement. Lastly, well, not lastly, want to thank Javier Rivas and the staff at the Tacoma Lane and Crossroads Development Authority for organizing the meeting today that Councilmember Westerlich and I had an opportunity to participate in with the Purple Line regarding upcoming closures of, lane restrictions, I should say, of New Hampshire and University Boulevard, as well as... Okay? As well as Riggs Road. So just for residents' awareness, there will be definitely notifications that will be coming out, and we are also working with, with partners, the Purple Line, S H A, and the like, to try to get additional questions answered. Lastly, I want to thank those residents that provided comments tonight. Sue, thank you so much for your feedback. You're right, there's, there are tables of the ARPA over time, but they're buried in the budget, and it's not really helpful. So definitely, we'll work with staff to make sure that, especially during the upcoming budget process, we usually have ARPA presentations, we could provide a little bit more clarity around the history, but also what's left and how things have been rejuggled to meet the federal requirements. And so, and thank you so much, Mary Jane, for your continued advocacy. Please know that we are definitely looking for things that may be coming across our plates in Annapolis during this session around supporting individuals with disabilities, and we also, as a city, continue to make that population a priority, particularly as we are speaking through, continuing our work on priorities tonight, you will hear individuals with disabilities are still included as part of those priorities. And so with that, I'm going to turn things over to our city manager for city manager comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council, and our guests. From the Police Department, on Friday, January 24th, Montgomery Park... Yeah, it's on. Okay. On Friday, January 24th, Montgomery Park suspended a portion of the Sligo Creek Open Parkway on Fridays moving forward. This is to alleviate traffic impacts at the intersection of Sligo Creek Parkway and Piney Branch Road, resulting from the Purple Line construction. This is a temporary change. Together with the Tacoma Park Volunteer Fire Department, we are plunging into the Chesapeake Bay with other law enforcement agencies on Friday, January 31st, for, for the polar bear plunge. Please support our Tacoma Park Police Department and Fire Department team benefiting the Maryland Special Olympics by visiting the Maryland Special Olympics webpage, which is HTTPS: colon, backslash, backslash, SOMD, for Special Olympics Maryland, dot org. Going to the bottom of the page where it says 2025 Polar Bear Plunge, and donate. Our Tacoma Park Police Department's team name is Handcuffs and Haligans. Haligans. Tacoma Park Police are still collecting new and gently-used bath towels, beach towels, bathroom rugs, hand towels, washcloths, blankets, beds, toys, and unopened food to help the Montgomery County Animal Shelters. We will be collecting through Friday, February 7th. Please bring your donations to the Tacoma Park Police Department Lobby, 7500 Maple Avenue, and we will get them to the animal shelters. Note, for the safety of the animals, please, no fitted sheets, items with zippers or snaps, and/or other fabrics with rips or frayed edges. There will be space, there is still space available in the 2025 Community Police Academy, which begins on March 4th. This free 12-week program consists of one class a week on Tuesday evenings from 7:00 PM to 9:30 PM, covering patrol, traffic enforcement, use of force, criminal investigations, firearms, community policing, and more. The presentations are slideshow lecture style, and will be presented by police officers, detectives, and civilians of the Tacoma Park Police Department. There will also be multiple opportunities for hands-on learning through equipment demonstrations, practical scenarios, field trips, and ride-alongs with patrol officers. If you are interested in learning about the Tacoma Park Police Department and local government, if you are 16 years old or older and live or work in Tacoma Park, then you may apply. The applicants will be accessing sensitive areas of the Police Department during the class. Thus, the applicants will be required to fill out a background check waiver to attend the class. The applicants may not have any serious misdemeanor or felony offenses. Applications for the Community Police Academy are available at the Tacoma Park Police Department, or can be found on our webpage. A link will be included in the posted city manager comments. Please complete both the application and the background waiver form. The deadline is Friday, February 14th. From the Public Works Department, earlier today, the vegetation team at the Public Works, at Public Works, held a volunteer event at the Stuart Armstrong Pollinator Arboretum. A number of teens volunteered on their no-school day to help lay wood chips on the path. This meant a lot of shoveling, wheelbarrowing, and raking. Thank you to all for your very hard work. And finally, a, I think a shout-out from all of us. On behalf of the mayor and council, and my staff and me, I'd like to express our deep appreciation to the... and my staff and me, I'd like to express our deep appreciation to the city of College Park for allowing us to meet in their City Hall, a wonderful facility, for our mayor and council working retreat all day last Saturday, and free of charge. Specifically, I want to thank city clerk Yvette Allen and city manager Kenny Young for accommodating us. It was a very productive workday for Tacoma Park, and one day, we would be happy to return the favor. That's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Any questions for the city manager? Councilmember Schlegel?
Well, you piqued my curiosity with the word "hulligan," so I've looked it up. And a halligan is a multipurpose tool that firefighters use to break open doors. Looks like a pretty amazing tool. It's got different ends on it. I don't think it's available for sale at Ace.
Well, given that this is the Police Department, I'm just glad that it's not hooligans.
Wonderful. Okay, we're going to move into our voting session. The first item this evening is a resolution approving a fee waiver for the use of the auditorium. Would the city manager like to provide any introductory language about this resolution before we call the vote?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. This comes as a result of a request. This is granting a waiver of the normal auditorium rental fee for Troop 33 Eagle Scout, for an Eagle Scout ceremony, proposed for February 9th, which is a Sunday, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m., during hours that the community center is regularly open. In December, Mr. Bruce Anderson, who's White Oak District Commissioner of the Scouts and a parent of one of the new Eagle Scouts, attended, appeared before you as city council to request, respectfully request a waiver of the rental fee to use the auditorium for a Troop 33 Eagle Scout ceremony. The ceremony is to recognize four Tacoma Park young people who have achieved the rank of Eagle Scout, which is a wonderful thing. Troop 33 is eligible to receive five free room rentals per year. Normally, would not include the auditorium. However, I am recommending that the mayor and council consider approving this waiver, given the number of public service projects that Boy Scouts in general and Troop 33 specifically have provided to this community over the years, including fairly recently in the stairway to the park nearby being the most recent one. So at this point, I'd just like to, we will forego, I'm recommending we forego, the minimum $600 fee that would be charged for the use of the auditorium. There is not a request for city staff, so no cost there, and no request for audiovisual equipment, so no charge would accrue there. And at this point, happy to answer any further questions.
Great. Not seeing any hands. And just as a reminder, I believe this group would have had to reserve two rooms for free, and it wouldn't have been enough space. So this just allows for them to have the space that they need for their event.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right. Seeing no hands, we're going to go ahead and call the vote. And I just want to, this is just a resolution. We can just do, all those in favor?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Councilmember Honzak?
I just want to recuse myself from this vote. My son is one of the four Eagle Scouts, so I don't think it's appropriate for me to vote. Thank you.
Excellent. Okay. All those in favor of approving a resolution authorizing a waiver of the auditorium rental fee for the troop?
Mayor, I'm sorry, did, was there a motion, and did we do that?
Oh, no. Would someone like to move authorizing a waiver for the auditorium rental fee for a Troop 33 Eagle Scout ceremony?
So moved.
Councilmember Dubala, do I have a second?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert seconds. All those in favor of the resolution authorizing a waiver of the auditorium rental fee for a Troop 33 Eagle Scout ceremony, please say aye.
Aye.
Do you have any nays? Do we have any abstaining?
Abstaining.
Perfect. All right. Thank you so much, and thank you.
You're all invited.
Mayor, the city TV folks would like five minutes to change the microphones.
Okay, that's perfectly fine. We're going to take a break, and we will reconvene after them.
[applause]
Okay, good evening, everyone. Just doing a quick mic check. Okay, you all can hear me? All right, so we've had a little bit of a switch-up in terms of our mic setup. So I just want to let my colleagues know about how this process is going to work, because I can no longer see who's raising their hands, and there are no buttons to push with these new mics. So if you would like to speak, if you wouldn't mind, please raise your hand. When I acknowledge you, our tech staff will make sure that your mic is functioning. Does that work for folks? It's going to have to, because the only way you're going to get through tonight.
Mayor, seriously, would you like one of us to just jot down the order of hands that have gone up, so that everybody doesn't have to be like this?
Yes. I mean, well, I will try to keep track, but I will be turning my head while simultaneously trying to read a track changes version of a document, so we'll see how well that goes.
Okay.
All right. So now, we're going to get into our next work session for the evening, and that's the work session on city council priorities for the 2025-2026 term. So I just want to publicly apologize to my colleagues, because there's just been a lot going on this week, and I was not able to get the plethora of edits to everyone in enough time for everyone to kind of sit down, digest, and develop your own thoughts around what's here. So in order to make sure that we're able to get through tonight, but more importantly, help people to understand this crazy markup, I'm going to go through the document so people have an opportunity to kind of know what's here. I'll also talk through the questions and provide some explanations behind some of the edits that were made, so that we can discuss them, so everyone kind of understands what was going on. And then, from there, we'll make sure that everyone, everyone should already have these documents in your inbox, a clean version, just because track changes can make you insane, as well as the full markup version of the document. So that's in everyone's inbox, and you'll have until the end of the week to provide any additional edits that you have. Are there any preliminary questions about this process before we kind of jump in? Okay, so everyone has two documents, right? So you have a markup version. You have the markup version because in Word, when you strike out in track changes something to delete, then when you create the clean version, it doesn't show up. So I want to make sure that people can see the things that have been recommended for removal and why, as well as something that's a little bit more manageable for people to provide your feedback on. When we met during our last council meeting, there was a couple of things that we discussed in terms of what we were trying to achieve with our goals. One, we were trying to shorten things a little bit to make them more realistic as it relates to being able to be accomplished in two years. Two, we were taking a look at some of the things that were there to kind of say, hmm, have we done enough as a city during the last council term to determine whether or not this item still needs to remain? Or is there something new that we want to highlight? Okay? So we'll get started with the advancing a community of belonging. So just as a reminder for folks, during the last council meeting, we discussed eliminating the objective, well, one, let me take a step back. We decided to keep the goal, advancing a community of belonging. That was something that was agreed to. We decided to We decided to eliminate the objective, build on lessons learned during COVID-19 pandemic to increase residents and small businesses' resilience to the impact of emergency situations, so that they can recover and thrive in the future. So that was eliminated. The second objective, further the city's race equity work, we determined we wanted to keep that. The third objective, it was originally, and you see in the master markup, that the prior language was deleted. Council members noted that the language is very long, and so the language was revised for brevity. So it now says, identify needs and prioritize community programming, focusing on youth, families, seniors, and residents facing systemic barriers, such as Black, Indigenous, and people of color, immigrants, and I did not include on the main page LGBTQIA, but it is in the body. We'll talk about that shortly, but that is one edit that needs to go in. Low-income workers and those with disabilities. And again, we can edit the language, but the goal was to kind of keep the essence, but make it a little shorter. The last item was defend our status as a sanctuary city and maintain our commitment to be in a welcoming and inclusive community while all residents experience a sense of belonging. It was mentioned that we should consider taking the defend our status as a sanctuary city out. We're not gonna defend it, that is who we are. And so, but we still want to make sure that we're providing the necessary resources, so that we can maintain a community of belonging. So if folks want to bear with me, we're gonna take the advancing a community of belonging, and we're going to go to, if you're looking at the master markup, council member Dabala. Okay. If you go to the main markup, page four on the major markup, is where we kind of get started with striking stuff out. Yes, the pages are numbered. Yep. Down at the bottom, so you will just see advancing a community belonging. You see that the objective for COVID has been eliminated, along with the strategies, along with the desired outcomes, as well as the major initiatives. Are folks looking at the master markup? Council member Schlegel.
I don't have a master markup, I have two identical-
Okay.
They might look identical, but they're slightly different.
He may not have got-
Yep.
I actually think we might have been short one.
Okay. The master markup is the one that includes all of the strike through.
Twenty-two pages?
It is twenty-two pages. And the other document is the clean version. And it does not include all of the master markups, the things that have been deleted are removed, and that document is ten pages.
Thank you.
Okay. So I'm just gonna walk people through the edits that were made, and then we'll open the floor for discussion. So just as a reminder, we cut out all of the COVID-19-related items. For the objective, further the city's racial equity work, I tweaked the first strategy. It was updated to make it clear that we need to update the race equity framework. The framework established the use of the race equity statements for all agenda items, but this requirement was later removed. So there were, I don't know, council member Dabala, if you remember, there was the back and forth about the validity of some of our race equity statements. And so we never went back, just as a- Right. Mm-hmm. So that was strategy one, so instead of building on, update the approach to address race equity, including how we organize, institutionalize, and operationalize equity by updating the racial equity framework and race equity considerations. So making sure that we have an agreed-upon approach for that. The second strategy was not edited, it was the same as the prior list of priorities. Evaluate how the city is processing and responding to requests and complaints, so that they are done in an equitable way across the city. And then the last item, remove unlawful restricted covenants within the city. Now, I do want to just put a plug, just bring folks' awareness. We will talk later in the documents about processing and responding to requests and complaints. And the question may be whether or not this is duplicative, but this particular, I left it here, because it does relate to aspects of equity, but I just want to make sure that I flag that for folks. Council member Schlegel.
On that first point, and this is the first strategy, I recognize update approach, that we don't have to know exactly what we're aiming for in updating an approach, we don't have to spell that out, I guess. But is it possible to add how we measure to organize, institutionalize, and operationalize? Because I know there are jurisdictions that have come up with indicators that they study over time.
The metrics component- Is part of the second- Item for this objective, and we will talk about that when we talk about identifying and prioritizing community needs.
I see, so this is elsewhere, okay.
Yep. Council member Hanzak.
I was just wondering, because of the use of the word evaluate, and I'm sorry, I don't remember asking this before, has the city done an evaluation, like, or asked for even a memo on this second bullet, on the second objective here?
I do not believe so, but we can follow up with staff about that.
Okay, thanks.
I will be fully candid, a lot of our race equity work, due to staff transitions, kind of was put on pause a little bit. And so the hope with this priority is that we will encourage staff to develop an approach for us to really flesh out an approach and how we plan to address race equity in the city. Council member Lammon.
I think I want to follow up on that question, because last time, evaluate wasn't part of the strategy. And knowing whether it's appropriate to move on to implement, which is what this sort of more sounds like, would seem to me to be something we would first need to know, whether that evaluation had been done. Like, it would be premature to move ahead with the operationalizing, if that. So I feel like we should find out more about where we stand in having that information, before we give direction to carry it forward, if you see what I mean.
I do. And I do want to say, when we get to later in the document, there are other points about our process for addressing complaints. So we may want to rethink, or as you're reviewing, you may want to rethink how we word this as, or do we need this, and what we have in the later sections of the document. Okay. Council member Dabala.
What is the, what's the thinking behind taking out the training part? Is it money, is it?
The training part, for me, was more about building the approach. And so training would be part of the ultimate approach that we would take.
And that was my next question, is I had mentioned at the last meeting, changing further the equity work to build an approach, something a little more specific than that. Should I put that forward, then, in writing, as a possible change to the objective? For everybody to think about, making further the city's racial work a little more specific, by talking about building an approach.
As long as you consider the removal of the restrictive covenants as part of that approach. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. And just as-
Was I too quiet about that? Did y'all get it?
So the desired outcome for the race equity was continued progress towards a more racially equitable community in government, where all residents in our city experience a sense of belonging. Just as a reminder, at the end of each of the outcomes, we also list the major projects and initiatives. And so one of the pieces was previously the cultural plan, that was our arts and humanities and what they were doing, but that was done, it's expired, but I think it could be something we talked to our arts and humanities committee about. Also, the public space management plan and the work that's been done there is also complete. So really trying to keep the major projects that we're hoping to get done, to updating the framework and developing that approach, as well as making sure that we're addressing the restrictive covenants. Council member Schlegel.
Okay, yes, thank you. Staying on my proposal earlier about adding measure into that strategy. So thank you for pointing out that metrics are mentioned on page six. In that context, within the strategies on page six, is strictly about programs and to determine existing gaps in program offerings. And I feel, I'd like to know whether my colleagues agree or disagree. To me, it feels important that we have broader-scale measures that we're trying to establish of equity. For example, if we're considering all of our housing policies, which are not direct city programs, how are we tracking the impact of housing changes or development on people through an equity lens? So I would like to see measure included in that broad statement there.
Council member Hanzak.
I would support, I would, I agree. I think it will be difficult for us to be able to say with certainty that we have made progress, if we don't include metrics. And I appreciate Mayor Searcy, that I think you're indicating that right now, we don't have the approach nailed down, so that would certainly include metrics. But just to be explicit about that, that's an expectation of council might be helpful.
And I think the, because there were references to metrics throughout. And I will just say, you know, when it comes to the priorities, if we put the same thing everywhere, then how does it become a priority? Right? So in this case, the goal was to make sure that we formalize our approach for race equity, which may include things like training plans for staff, analysis of our programs, developing additional tools, which staff are doing, but maybe we're not doing in a comprehensive way, which is kind of different from when we are talking about the second objective, identifying needs and prioritizing community programming. And then how do we make sure that one of our strategies is to utilize resident surveys, staff and committee reports, program attendance and metrics, racial equity assessment tools, and other evaluative or outreach approaches to determine existing gaps in program offerings? And so I think that one of the things that also is important to keep in mind for my colleagues, the newer colleagues, is that the staff has done quite a bit of work, and we've included in our upcoming budget, the consultant services as it relates to measure development. So you'll see hints of metrics, but it's not every single objective do we, or every single strategy do we have metrics listed. But again, as you all have time to kind of go through and digest and kind of walk through the entire document, you may say, hey, it makes more sense for us to emphasize it as it relates to how the government processes and procedures. And we would just make sure that if that happens, then automatically we would know that there would be metrics across the board as it relates to our programs and the like. Continuing the point about the second objective regarding identifying needs and prioritizing community programming, there's a question that's included in the strategies, and please note that staff has received this as well, asking about the timing of the metrics work. And also, do we need to revisit tools such as resident surveys and the balancing act technologies? So that is a question for staff as it relates to that first strategy. The other point, the second item, is improve equitable access to programming services and government decision-making to better reach residents who rarely engage with the city, including residents of color, immigrants, especially those with limited English and renters. This was just revised to kind of streamline the language a little bit, but it was revised to reduce emphasis on COVID broadband and library access, given the current progress related to these efforts. Emphasis is more on ensuring less engaged residents have a seat at the table when it comes to program services and decision-making. So please let me know if there's some questions or thoughts regarding the revisions that were made, and if it's a little hard to make sense out of it, given all of the track changes. On page three of the cleaner version of the document, it's a little more readable. Council member Dabala.
So the overall objective is to identify needs and prioritize programming. And so you, this is, not you, but this has got better engaging residents as a subset of that, and I almost feel like it's the other way around. That engaging residents then leads to better programming, et cetera. So I don't know, is that something we need to tackle, or if that's too fine-grained at this point?
I will say, I was- I was, yeah. Because the way it was written before, it was very focused on broadband, it was very focused on access to our new library services, particularly the satellite site. And so this time around is, okay, so what is it that we're trying to make sure that we're highlighting and that we're trying to tackle? That, given that we've made so much progress as it relates to those other goals. Council member Schlegel.
Thank you. Council member Dabala, perhaps, I was thinking that where it says, improve equitable access, I wonder if you're talking about the idea of design, equitable design and access, which would imply making sure that the engagement is on the front end and the designer programs? I don't know if that might be helpful.
That's a good thought, it's not the thought I was having. The thought I was having is that the overall goal, objective is about programming, and this talks about programming services and decision-making, and engagement and decision-making. So it's actually broader.
And we could also keep in mind that when we talk about engagement, whether or not this can be struck and then maybe moved, as we're talking about the work in terms of engagement.
Yeah, so let's all think about that, because based on our discussion last week, it's pretty clear that two-way engagement with residents who have historically not been that engaged is really important to all of us. So let's figure out what the best way is to highlight it, whether it's here, or raising it, or moving it-
Or putting, moving it to the other section.
Whatever, okay.
Yep. Okay. So the next item is establish a can- Yes, I'm so sorry, council member Lammon.
Sorry, a quick question, also to get at what we are including in this one strategic bullet, which encompasses pretty much way too much. And I would like to suggest that we break up access to programming and engagement with government, because they have different components to them. And then I also think with respect to access to programming, one of the issues we've discussed in several council meetings is a lot of the programming that's been happening at our satellite library location. To somehow have this language reflect that access to programming is geographic, as well as having other components, because we did want our city staff to dig into the question of the viability of having continued programming at that location or some other location nearby, where a whole new group of residents are being served. So those would potentially mean an additional bullet to separate process from programming, you know, government activity from programs, and then to reflect that that evaluation should include location. Because that's a component of equitable access.
Thank you so much, and I'm listening, I'm just typing, trying to make sure that we're capturing this.
It could be reflected under desired outcomes, that that's a way to.
Geographic barriers.
Geographic, yeah, overcoming geographic as well as linguistic barriers.
Okay. Any other questions or thoughts around the second? Oh, I'm sorry, I missed one. And then the last I, was added. Coordinate with state, county, nonprofit partners and community groups to address issues such as food insecurity, workforce development, emergency rental assistance and access to recreational services for youth. So this was added. And it was alluded to under the prior COVID priority to address specific programming needs that are either outside of the city's authority or would require additional external parties to aid in. And I thought that it would be important for us to make sure that that's something that is still referred to here, particularly as it relates to some of our grant programs that we could potentially call out as something we want to make sure that we're continuing to do. Our community grants, food insecurity grants, those things.
Excuse me, which page are we on?
I am on page six and it is the bullet for the second strategy. All right. And so, the last item is maintain our commitment to being a welcoming and inclusive community while all residents experience a sense of belonging. The strategies, continue advocacy efforts focused on immigrant rights and needs, including connecting those in needs with assistance to appropriate area organizations. And the, the next one is explore new ways to share information with and provide services to immigrant and refugee communities through improved community outreach and engagement processes, including through translation. And this could be tweaked, but the idea was that in light of the federal efforts, the council may want to include resources in the FY26 budget to support educating and supporting immigrants and refugees in the city. So the idea is that there are very, very specific and unique ways that you have to, or approaches you have to take to engage immigrant populations, especially as a member of the government. And so making sure that we're able to make sure that we're focused on trying to identify what those mechanisms are and trying to connect people with the right information and access to resources.
Councilmember Westlek.
I just, I'm, I'm fine with pulling the defend our status as a sanctuary city. But I'll say that the remaining text is, I support it, but it sounds incredibly broad. And then the strategies are specific to our immigrant residents. So I just don't know if we want to either make this a bullet that's kind of about welcoming and inclusivity for different groups beyond just immigrants, or if we want to put something into that initial one that implying that that's what this is about specifically, if that makes sense.
It does, okay.
Yeah, whether to specifically mention immigrants or whether to put some other pieces in here. I'm not sure if either way.
And that's okay. The goal of today is for us, this, tonight is for us to kind of talk through. I'm posing lots of questions so that when you go through and provide your edits, it'll, it'll be from a place of we've kind of walked through some things to think about. Councilmember Lehman.
Just a few minutes ago when we were talking to Mary Maturi, we were talking about the efforts that we have engaged in for disabled adults. But I have a sense that there are a number of disabled adults that are represented in the group that she mentioned, parents of adult disabled. And so I just wanted to flag that because there's a reference to it. But as, as Councilmember Westlek was noting, all the specifics address the immigrant community. And maybe we are determining that's our focus. But I just wanted to flag that. I want to make sure that if there are other groups that we want to call out, that we not forget that this would be the place, I think, for that particular issue.
Yeah. One of the things that I'm leaning a little bit more towards making it the last bullet specific, the last item specific to immigrants, because the second includes lots of groups.
And so if the second one is not just about programs, then that fixes that.
Yeah, so identify needs and prioritize community programming focusing on youth, family, seniors and residents who tend to face systemic barriers such as Black and Indigenous people of color, immigrants, LGBTQIA, low-income workers and people with disabilities.
Yeah, to break that one down a bit more and not just program.
So it's kind of one of these things where the second item includes everyone and making sure that there's access to programming generally. And how do we make sure that they're accessing that programming? And then the last, which was originally thought of as a way to just really focus on our sanctuary city status, was more focused on immigrants' rights. Sorry, I'm like, trying to make sure I look at both sides.
Councilmember Westlek, I appreciate, and it just seems like all residents might be more focused as immigrants and refugees. And I would further suggest maybe, just beyond sense of belonging, I know we can't guarantee, but a sense of safety and belonging, I think, would help us, help us and the staff really focus in for two years.
Sense of safety and belonging.
Or security and belonging, something like that.
Councilmember Hanzak.
Yeah, I, I just want to acknowledge that, yeah, we, we, as Councilmember Westlek said, you know, we haven't, we haven't outlined here specific strategies for some of our other groups, including our disabled or LGBTQIA or others. And I, I wonder how we can do this in the best way to make it clear, so, so that we are, we are honing these strategies beyond where we were, let's say, in the prior two years, where they're more specific to what is achievable and specific and maybe a little bit bigger than some of the other things while we still achieve the broader, you know, focus that is, that is the entire objective. So, I mean, I guess I would invite my colleagues to consider, are there any other specific tasks that are, or strategies that we expect to specifically employ over the next year or two years that we anticipate we will, we will need to maybe put funding behind or at least be very mindful of? I mean, one of the things that comes to mind to me is that we can see what's happening with our LGBTQIA community across the country. And as Councilmember Schlegel just said, we want to make sure that people feel safe here. But I've had people reach out to me and say that they would imagine that we might become a sanctuary city actually for the LGBTQIA community. So if there are other specific strategies that my council, fellow council members would like to see us put here, I think, you know, we should think about the, over the next, not, not immediately on the spot, but maybe over the next week or two. And, and this doesn't have to be a static document either, right, Mayor? Is that right?
Correct.
Right, okay.
And there, you will see there are places throughout the document where I'm flagging, hey, we may want to do something about this. As a way to kind of spark thoughts and to direct some of our newer colleagues to efforts that are either underway, not quite done, things that are new that we may want to continue, just as a way to kind of help you to see what's happening already or what's not happening. Okay, so that, that was not, Councilmember Lehman?
Sorry to persist on this point that I, I agree with you about flagging new strategies that we might want to highlight. During the pandemic, our, our county council, our county executive really flagged how vital it was for reaching immigrant communities, et cetera, to work through churches and other nonprofit institutions. And I think we have a very strong history on food, food security in this council of identifying those allies and, and, you know, substantively engaging with them here. And I think this particular crisis that we're facing now suggests that we may want to focus the strategy on identifying groups in the community like CASA, but beyond CASA as well, that have particular expertise in helping with the challenges that they face. And I would like to suggest that that be one of the strategies that we suggest that the city do, because it strengthens our ability as a small city to do more if we strengthen our allyship with the other broader community in the NGO or, or our religious sectors.
Yeah, I think it would be just making, to, I believe, Councilmember Hanzak's point, that second bullet more explicit. So if it is, explore new ways to share information and provide services, we wouldn't necessarily provide those services. The idea is that we would be working with partners.
We would be exploring new ways to meet those needs that we hadn't used before. Building a, you know, we've, we've done this in certain sectors more than in others. So that could be a way to, to do more with less.
Yeah. And so that could be something that could be flagged as a potential tweak. So that, we, we just got through the first ones, yes. Wasn't that painful, huh? I know the markup looks very daunting. All right, so the next item is fiscally sustainable government. So just want to walk through this a little bit with folks, so everybody kind of understands what happened. Under fiscally sustainable government, we had a couple of items that were removed. But I'm going to start with the first. The first, we tweaked the, establish the city's long-term fiscal sustainability strategy and change that to develop a long-term fiscally sustainable. It was my understanding and definitely welcome feedback from staff that we don't necessarily have a long-term strategy just yet definitively.
We're working on it.
We're working on it. We don't like, have one just yet. So, so that's what staff are doing right now. Would the city manager like to respond to that? Okay, perfect. Councilmember DeBala.
Is it developed or is it formalized or, or complete? Or, developed makes it sound like there hasn't been anything going on and that's just not true.
But does it have, does it have a, is there a predecessor of a strategy? There never was one. So that means we would be developing a new, something new.
We did, if I may, we did have the report from, I forget, the Florida-based consulting group. You might remember their name. But they, they had specific recommendations for fiscal sustainability that they gave to the city. So we had a starting point from that. That was the previous council, and you remember better than I.
Yes, I can clarify, Raftellus was the company. They did a long-range revenue forecast. It wasn't, I think it was very, and this was before I was here. It looks like it was very useful, but it was not universal in terms of addressing all of our financial picture. There's a strong emphasis on just revenue sources. But we've been, one of the things that we're, will be proposing to council will be not just an update of that, because it's about two years old now. Well, it was 2023 when that was commissioned and I think a report maybe in the early fall of '23. Not only does that need to be updated, but we are working on an expanded scope for, to try and get some more value out of a more complete assessment of our financial situation and looking for more discreet recommendations for the building blocks to broaden the tax base so that there's less reliance on the property tax alone, residential property tax. That is something we're working towards. I, I would say that it is a revenue forecast and it did speak to sustainability, but it was mainly a set of projections of, here's a scenario A and B and C, and here's the trend lines and, you know, here's the spend that you would have under these different scenarios. What we're looking for, what I'm looking for at this point is more in the way of best practices and innovative ideas on ways that we can generate those revenues. The report didn't really get so much into that. And that's the kind of a deeper dive that I believe we need to do as we continue to try to keep services affordable in this community.
And I also just want to add, in the prior list of priorities, it was referenced that the organizational assessment final report, it also had recommendations around certain ways in which certain efficiencies and the like could be considered. And so I lean more towards developing an approach because we have information, we have a lot of information. We have information related to very specific aspects of our budget that's kind of like all over the place. And so how do we kind of bring all of that information together so that we kind of know as a community, what's the path forward? I think is something that would be really helpful for us to, to develop. Councilmember Schlegel.
I, I appreciate that in this, in the two strategies that are listed, we're doing a lot of careful looking at different, you know, fund areas and reserves. And we're looking to our city manager and staff for cost-saving efficiencies. I wonder if we could have a strategy, or I wonder if my colleagues would be interested in a strategy where we, we also look outward at other, other comparable municipalities or jurisdictions to see what other kinds of best practices or structures they're using and just to see if there are ideas available from elsewhere.
That's precisely what I was talking about, was looking at best practices that, that gets beyond our borders. Try to look at professional associations, the local government, and look at some good case studies, cities that might be comparable to us maybe in our financial makeup and how did those communities move their, you know, stabilize their financial position and move forward. But yes, you're exact, I, we're, we're singing the same song.
And I do just want to take a quick second, because I think there may be some questions because of what was included. So there were, so we, the establish policies for the appropriate level of reserves, that was part of the priorities before. The considering, yeah, as well as consider establishing new reserves where needed. That was part of the prior, the prior item. The identify methods to increase cost savings efficiencies in government operations was, one, there was a discussion around efficiencies that happened during the last meeting and what are some ways in which we can incorporate that. And then in the prior, in the prior priorities, there was a reference to recommendations from the city's organizational assessment and making, addressing those recommendations. And those recommendations related to potential cost savings. So again, we can, you know, definitely welcome feedback on the wording. But the addition of that bullet was to try to capture, from what I heard, the desire to encourage city management to be creative and kind of thinking through ways in which we may be able to come up with some cost-saving measures. And the prior, the prior document did refer to the organizational, the recommendations from the organizational assessment. Sorry, I have no idea who's first.
Councilmember Hanzak.
Are we, are we, do you mind if we talk about a, a different, non-existent bullet for just a second?
Yeah, go ahead.
I, it occurred to me that under this, in light of the news this week, and I'm looking at the city manager in particular right now, would it be useful for us to put in an objective? I just, I just scratched this down because it's such fresh news. But something like ensure that the city has an adaptive strategy in place for short-run fiscal impacts in relation to changes at the national level. I'm just, I'm thinking about, I'm sure some of the calculations we, we will need to look at, you know, federal government spending. But I'm, I'm even thinking, and I hope that my following statement will not cause undue stress. But, you know, given that people may lose jobs on a fairly substantial scale, I personally would like to see some kind of analysis of how that might ultimately, like if, if we really saw a big change in federal income, how it would affect both our broader city budget in terms of that percentage, but also property taxes if we saw a change, for example, in the way that people were, maybe it wouldn't be property taxes, but maybe other forms of taxes that are going to come through if we saw a lot of people losing their jobs. I don't know, I just, I haven't thought through it yet. But I, it, it does concern me about our short-run fiscal impacts and that wouldn't affect us probably this year, but it would affect us potentially. but it would affect us potentially next fiscal year and it could be really topsy-turvy and something that needs to be regularly revisited. I, I don't know if my colleagues agree or if I'm being too, you know, too fearful here.
I mean, I do, I will say, I do think it's important to note that the city currently doesn't have a huge amount. I mean, we're hoping, fingers crossed on one, one funding stream. But historically, we, we don't have a high number of federal grant monies that we use as a city typically. Now, you know, while I think the, the impacts to our residents is important for us to, to be aware of, I think that that could relate to, quite frankly, some of the other aspects that we will likely talk about in terms of making sure that we have partners in place that provide certain aspects of social services and the like that people are aware of. What I'm a little bit more nervous about is what may happen at the state level because we. Yeah.
Right, right.
Because we rely perhaps a little bit more on state grant funds for things. And so, yeah, we rely on state grant monies a little bit more than we do the feds. And so I, I hear your concern. I think what we have to do is just continue to advocate and be in touch with our state colleagues to make sure that we have a firmer handle on how changes that may happen in Annapolis as a result of the budget may trickle down to us. Uh, I'm sorry, who was first? Councilmember Lammon, I think your hand was first.
Thank you.
You all put them up at the same time, I'm sorry.
Smack you down. I wanted to just talk about the language with respect to reserves, including the equipment replacement reserve. Two, two points. The first is that I, I believe there's a plan underfoot underway, if I could address this question to you, Mr. City Manager, to evaluate whether we should be leasing a significant proportion or some proportion of the vehicles that we currently might be purchasing through an equipment reserve. And how, and that if the result is determined that leasing rather than purchasing happens, does the equipment reserve still refer to leasing or only acquisition? And secondly, we have had comments from, from residents who are budgeteers about how setting money aside in reserves tends to affect behavior and decision-making and perhaps make it seem like free money if it's in the reserve. Whereas if it is sort of a free-floating asset that is, you know, distributed, the pie is cut each year as you need it, that that may contribute to fiscal sobriety. So that's a general question about whether more reserves is a good idea or fewer reserves is a good idea with the, with the pie being divided carefully and not having, you know, pre-cut slices. So those are the two parts of the question. The equipment reserve, is it for leasing? Might it change a lot? And secondly, how about this additional, more reserves?
I will be proposing in the coming proposed budget, funding for retaining a professional consultant to look into the leasing versus purchase. That is not something that we have full expertise in-house to do and it's very time, it's a time-consuming project. Other cities tend to do it the same way. They'll, they'll study it thoroughly and have more solid information. So this will be a proposal for all of you to consider in the proposed budget to come. I would say yes, any proposed, and the ERR would address whether it's leasing or purchase. It's still being applied to the same purpose of equipment replacement. And with respect to, I mean, programs like ERR are built around a set of criteria for vehicles, you know, age, condition, maintenance history, and other factors. And the requests from the various departments, the needs for replacement, you know, it's carefully calibrated to basically set aside money over a period of time till you get to that, that, I'll call it dead-end period where you've got to turn over the equipment for replacement. It's basically a savings account that gives you the certainty that when that critical piece of equipment, whether it's a police car or a garbage packer or something like that, is, is at the end of its useful life, that the funds are in place and that a purchase can be logically planned. It, it's a very responsible and common practice of cities and counties and states even to have programs like this, basically a discrete program to plan for, rationally plan for, and responsibly budget for replacement of vehicles based on criteria. And we review our criteria and our programs annually. I was just in a meeting this afternoon on the ERR to do precisely that. We have an ongoing internal committee that works with the interdisciplinary, interdepartmental, where representatives from all of the departments meet to continue to try and calibrate this tool. It is a, frankly, a very efficient way to replace vehicles responsibly as opposed to each year, it's kind of a free-for-all.
And, and I do just want to, Councilmember Lammon, your second question around reserve amounts, I do just want to channel Director Chung. There are legal reasons why we have to maintain certain levels of reserves. And so while it may be thought of, hey, you can kind of, you know, if you tighten up your reserve, that might mean you'll be more inclined to tighten up your budget. That's, that's not what the actuaries actually advise you to do and to make sure that you have a specific percentage of your expenses available in the reserve at all time. It's just good governance.
I'm not trying to mess with the unobligated reserve, Madam Chung.
Thank you.
I get that.
For a number of years, the city has not been in a position to fully fund its ERR. It's fallen short of what would technically be required to do full replacement over time of vehicles as they come due based on criteria. We're trying to get closer to meeting the obligations and keeping a smooth replacement schedule. But in harder financial times, the city has not had adequate funding towards its ERR, for example.
Councilmember DeBala?
Yeah, I think what's bothering me here is that we now have two, under fiscally sustainable government, we have two things. Develop a long-term fiscal strategy and explore revenue options. A fiscal strategy is not just spending, it's also revenues. And so splitting them out makes it sound like, well, we're going to cut our costs, but then also, I mean, just, the fiscal strategy has to include both. And so I'm struggling with how to organize this so that that's clear. So that doing a fiscal strategy is not the only thing we want to do. But if, but if we're going to do it, it has to include revenues as well as expenditures. So I just, I'm not, I don't know how to solve that problem, but I see it as, as a, as a challenge here. To isolate the revenue piece.
And I, I, I hear you, Councilmember DeBala. I think the challenge is to try to predict your revenues is like reading tea leaves. You don't know what's going to happen with assessments over time. You can make assumptions.
Sure.
You don't necessarily know about what you may be able to recoup in terms of grant funds or other funds, you can assume.
Yeah, I, I wasn't suggesting that we add a bullet that says predict revenues. I was just pointing out that, that it has to be somehow addressed. Does the city manager have a comment?
In terms of revenues? Revenues are addressed as part of the second objective?
May I offer a suggestion?
Yeah, that's my problem.
Yeah, I think that the point that you're making is that our fiscally sustainable government chapeau should include both revenue sources, both spending and revenues. And so therefore, if you have that reflected in the, in the title, that it was both parts of fiscal sustainability and bullet one then addressed, one, one would address revenues and the other would address spending of the two items underneath.
That's an interesting idea. For the city manager, is fiscal sustainability strategy only about the spending side?
No.
No, I mean, it's like a budget. You, you have, you know, in a balance sheet, you've got revenues and expenditures and you're trying to have appropriate strategies for, for both, that work compatibly. You know, in that first bullet where it refers to, under strategy, establish policies for appropriate levels of reserves and so forth. I mean, mayor and council has established policies. You have seventeen percent of unassigned reserves. And I think that percentage has been in place for a while. I, I wonder if it ought to be reviewed as opposed to establish? Because this might leave the impression that over the years, the council has not had such a thing, but you have. And likewise, we do have internal, certainly administrative policies, which are reviewed and ultimately approved by the mayor and council with respect to the equipment replacement reserve, by extension, facilities, maintenance reserve, and, and other reserves. That's all fully discussed and transparent in the development of a budget each year. And there are policies and criteria associated with each of those. So those have been established, but of course, they are always subject to modification.
Okay, I think one of the things that would be helpful, let's talk about the revenues. I think if the city manager can provide feedback. I don't think that the, the objective of developing or developing the city's long-term fiscal strategy, I don't interpret that as each strategy underneath is explicitly telling you how to do that, right? I see it more as what are some of the things or key approaches that we want to see as a council get done? So it, it could be that, yes, we want you to develop the strategy and we can work on the wording, we can work on the verb. But the idea is that I know that there's been lots of conversation for quite some time around our equipment replacement reserve, our reserve policies, and just making sure that that's solidified and everybody kind of understands what that is. And then as we've talked about, even in talking about the, at length about the leasing, there's been a desire for us to at least try to consider some cost-saving approaches and, and open things up. And we've been talking about it for some time. I think it's something important for us to make sure that we're striving to do. Councilmember Schlegel?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Cersei. Yeah, having something in leasing there, like strictly that word, I think is a good, a good bookmark to flag. I wanted to circle back because maybe I didn't word it so clearly a few minutes ago, but I asked about, that I think it's a good time for us as a council to take a serious look at how other municipalities similar, who face similar issues such as us, like a limited amount of commercially-sown land, for example, a commitment to affordable housing. How are they, how are they getting services delivered? And so I think that, I, I just want to make a case that there's the question of revenue, then there's a question of expenditures, but underneath all of that, there's the question of sourcing your deliverables. And we're in this county where we all pay county taxes. And it wasn't always the case that we were all in one county. Prior to 1997 or '08, we were a bi-county municipality. And so I could see where, back then, we needed to offer, we needed to make sure to offer a full menu so that we'd have parity across all the neighborhoods. But since we became in one county, I don't think there was ever the ask of, are there any services that really we want delivered through the county or shared with the county more? Sometimes we talk about this in little bits and pieces, like with the mental health counselors. But I think it's a very good time to ask that fundamental question. I don't think it's, I don't think it's necessarily the question to ask the city manager with, because you're looking internally at cost savings. This is a major, it's more of a major structural question. And I think that it's, it behooves the council to ask that at a juncture like this. I'm not talking about delivering fewer services to our residents. I'm talking about how we choose to source those services.
And, and I will say, there's been lots of discussion. There was even a little bit of that alluded to as part of the organizational assessment. There were some aspects of that study that didn't get into greater detail. But the organizational assessment did have references to things like, you know, hey, we're not going to be able to get into detail, but if you were to put your, your trash collection with the county, you know, or move some people around. And that's why the organizational assessment was cited here and, and the idea. I think it is really important for us, and that's why I think it's important for there to be a streamlined place where a lot of these sources are. These are things that have been studied over time, it's just all over the place. And if you don't know where to look, you're, it's, you're going to be a little pressed to find it. And so I think that's one of the reasons why this, this objective is an important one. Because I know we have this organizational assessment and I know you can go down to XYZ page and you can see where they kind of talked about, hey, we didn't do a full look at the county cost, but we looked at, based on what we have here, where you could put certain, move certain people and do certain things. So I do think that it's important for us to at least take a consolidated look at the information that we do have, but also recognize that it's not just about what's the cheapest. Sometimes cheap costs, right? So if it is the case that council wants to explore and have that information, but also be mindful of the fact that there may be other implications in terms of service delivery, complaints, inability to deal with those things, costs, additional costs in the long run. Those are things that we can have a conversation about as a council, but I think we need to have this piece tackled before we're able to kind of really have those conversations in a meaningful way.
Okay, just, just to make sure I understand then, I, I think that doing due diligence on those bigger structural questions of who provides what, county or city, I think that would, that would actually help a lot of residents to say, okay, this has been looked at and it has been determined, like these would be the trade-offs, say with street paving. County does it, city does it. What are the trade-offs? You know, criminal investigations, county does it, city does it. And those sorts of questions. And I don't, I don't know how you ask them, but I wouldn't be looking to say, I don't think it would be irresponsible for a council to say, oh, you found a way it can be done, let's do it. Because we value excellent services here and we would need to look at quality and, and cost trade-off.
Yeah.
Both, yeah.
I will just say that I think over our many years, there's, there's been, we've looked at some of those trade-offs. Again, we can continue to, I don't want to speak for the city manager in terms of what your plans are for ultimately developing the, the approach. But I will say that there is some evidence that we, over time, the city has looked at those trade-offs at length and ultimately made certain decisions as a result of, of those debates.
Right. My understanding is that's exactly true, that over the years, various services were, were looked at. You know, it's generally, I'll just speak generally. In my experience in other states, other, other cities, it's really to look at any given service and compare it to another potential provider is a deep dive, usually involving a professional consultant. You'll spend money looking into it, this is not a simple staff analysis. And you also want that independence ultimately of, of advice. The county doesn't provide refuse and recycling, they contract it out. So they're working with private haulers. These are for-profit organizations, not nonprofit, okay, with a profit margin. There is for those places, for example, and I'm speaking generally, I've seen this in other states. I've had, I've been in cities where we've costed out in-house refuse and recycling, for example, with private sector. One of the things that you'll find is that, yeah, you'll get a low-ball number for the first two or three years and they wait till you sell off your last truck. And then they've got you because there's no going back. You're not going to suddenly change your mind and come up with the money, you know, to buy another fleet of packers. And you're really at the mercy. And even the county doesn't provide, it's so expensive, they don't provide it themselves. They contract it out. Is there even any interest on the part of the county? You know, you'd have to look at each of these services. I think sometimes there's an assumption that, oh, they're just in the wings waiting to take on police or refuse or, you know, planning or whatever it is. Well, not necessarily. They, you know, they don't have the capacity, they struggle to fill vacancies. And if they would, they would probably charge an extreme premium. That's been my experience, not just. That's been my experience, not just from what I've seen in my eight years in Maryland, but other states. It's a very cautious process that takes time, a lot of analysis, and there is some expense associated with looking at any given service to analyze it out.
Thank you for that. So is it, should, are we given to understand then that these sorts of studies have been done in Tacoma Park? You said that you understand these sorts of large-scale expensive studies.
Department head, I believe, for instance, in Public Works, they've looked at whether stormwater or, for instance, I've heard that the study, there was some sort of review that was done. For the county to provide some of the stormwater would be more expensive for sure. And refuse, the same thing, but I don't know if there's a discrete, you know, study per se. I think some things were investigated. I don't suspect the city spent a lot of money on formal analyses in the past because that's what it does take to do it right and well. But, you know, these are, you know, mayor and council's direction, we can look at anything.
Go ahead, councilmember DeBala.
I can't remember if the organizational assessment was part of the things that were handed out to the new council members. Then that should be something we do.
Yep.
I'm looking over at the city clerk. He isn't sitting here, so.
Yeah, no worries. And there, in the version of the documents that I sent to you all, there are links. So if you click on, click in that document, you click, if it's in blue, click on it. It'll lead you to a document or a webpage.
By the way, I just, I wanted to say that labor is, like, fair practices in labor are very important to me and I know to our whole council. So any idea of transferring some services to the county, we'd have to look very closely at that.
That's a very good point, councilman, and I would also say, cost isn't the only thing, right? Accountability, quality of service. I've seen communities that have tried to go to outside sourcing for, say, refuse. Do you think if there's a missed pickup, that carrier's coming back any time in the next week, let alone the same day? I've heard horror stories about the level of service that you get when they're hiring day laborers to, in a for-profit refuse recycling operation. You know, accountability, you don't have the accountability. That's a separate company. And quality, you're, I've heard many stories where the residents notice the difference immediately.
Councilmember Landman?
Very quick question. I think that our city manager is relatively new to Tacoma Park, and I know I'm relatively new to this council. I know we have staff members who have been here a long time and who probably have, could recall and identify previous studies that look at different aspects of this. So I would wonder if we could ask the city manager to confer with, for example, Daryl, who's been here through generations of Public Works and things like that, to come back to us with a list of whatever such evaluations have been done in the last, say, decade or decade and a half, since, let's say, since we consolidated the city under one county, because there may be information that answers some of these questions, at least it might be dated, but it might be out there.
I think that for the purpose of the priorities, as long as we make it very clear that one of our priorities is for the staff to develop this fiscal sustainability strategy and that we're asking for them to identify methods to increase cost-saving efficiencies, then we don't have to have all of that information in order to say that that's one of our core strategies that we want them to employ, and then they will come back to us with an approach. And that approach can include providing us with a historical account of the various studies that have been provided or has been conducted within the city.
Any information would be dated and probably pretty useless if it was done even several years ago. It would just have to be done again.
That it had been investigated, that'll give us an idea of the parameters that you investigate and the factors that you consider in those, that were considered in those previous studies. It will just help us to inform our own work. I'm not asking for a major project here. I'm wondering if we could just learn about those.
Yes, and I appreciate the desire to learn, but I'm also trying to recognize that we also have priorities we need to confirm, right? So if it sounds very clear, given the level of interest, that making sure that this strategy is done is something we want to make sure happens, that we want to make sure that there is a review of reserves and our different reserve approaches, and that, you know, as part of this, and we could tweak the language because I made it up, but identifying methods and some cost-saving approaches may actually be considering or re-looking at some of the work, or in sharing some of the work that has been done in the past that identifies some comparisons between the offering of services through other mechanisms such as the county. Councilmember Westlech?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that it sounds like the idea of whether or not, who provides services, excuse me, that question, it sounds like at this point, if we're looking at, say, the next year, it's a kind of a communications, it sounds like we have a sense of it might not be worth it, and it's not worth it to hire a big consulting firm, but people have questions and they're not sure. They don't know if we ever did that. So that, to me, all falls into like a communications type of problem. And I personally am much more interested in the second priority about, if we're going to be looking at, how can we kind of make sure broadly our whole budget is in good shape going forward? It sounds like the, looking at how to expand our revenue is the much more important and potentially more impactful way to look at than looking at those services. So I definitely just wanted to raise that. I think that that second priority is very important if we're looking at what we want our staff to be spending time on.
Thank you, councilmember Westlech. So just to kind of move us into that next phase, just as a reminder, there was one strategy around recommendations from the Sustainable Investment and Banking, the Sustainable, gosh, what is it? The Resident Task Force to Adopt Sustainable Investment and Banking Practices. That has been moved to the committee section, so we'll talk about that. Engage government and updates regarding other task force recommendations. So in to councilmember Westlech's point, did not tweak the language in terms of the objectives of explore expanding city revenue options to identify long-term solutions necessary to diversify the city's revenue streams. The only thing that, couple of things that were done. The first, increase advocacy and lobbying activities. I added at the federal, state, and county levels to advocate for additional revenue sources for municipalities. We need to advocate to make sure that grant programs that we want to make sure are still moving at the, like, direct pay. Yep. So that was, you know, in the past, we perhaps were not as, because we didn't get those large federal, those large federal grants, but if our goal is to make sure that we're able to still be able to take advantage of some of these energy efficiency tax credits, we have to make sure that we're doing our due diligence. The next item was added from the budget priorities. So identify and analyze potential alternative revenue sources within the city's current authorities, such as the railroad and utility tax rate, as well as vacant property fee modifications. Again, those were items that were already in our budget resolution. The other is actively pursue external federal, state, and county grant funding opportunities to meet our short-term city goals. And then the other items, the, was deleted. The explore revenue sources consistent with the Housing and Economic Development Strategic Plan, that was removed. And then the review recommendations from city organizational assessment to explore cost-saving alternatives to programs and city service delivery. That was one that was identified as a revenue under the prior priorities. That was tweaked to make it a part of the long-term fiscal sustainability, fiscal strategy.
Question?
Councilmember DeBala?
Why did you take out revenue sources consistent with the strategic plan? Is it because we've already looked at most of them?
Yes.
Okay.
The only other thing that was, that was left, I believe, we did the pilots already, we did the, so I stuck to.
Revenue policies, but not revenue sources. Yeah, I get it. City did do that, but it doesn't turn up.
Right.
And I said this at the time of the budget resolution, and I'll say it again, vacant property fees, as I understand it from when we looked at it the last time, we might want to do that, but it isn't a budget, it isn't a revenue source of significant relevance.
Right.
Okay. Well, let me think about what these are.
Okay.
Councilmember Westlech? I hope it's not opening too big a can of worms, but I feel as though this is where there should be indication of our support for potentially more staffing around economic development as it relates to the broadening of revenue streams. And I didn't, I looked ahead to the, you know, the last priority, and I don't see a specific strategy there that sounds in line with that. So I raised that.
That, because that would also have budget implications. There's a couple of ways you could skin that cat. It could be noted as part of a vote upon the council to include it as part of a priority in terms of increasing staffing in that level, or it can be something that could be proposed as part of the budget for FY twenty-six. Councilmember Slagel?
Yes, Mayor Cersei, would it be, could we consider, a few years ago, the inventory tax was eliminated, and there was, at the time, I believe there was a commitment to reexamine that and reset it. And so I'm thinking about commercial, like, whatever the verb is. Commercial, just the topic areas I'm interested in for additional revenue would be inventory tax and also, it's a small amount of money, but the rental rates for public, for public space, public right-of-way. Just, a lot of municipalities are, with COVID somewhat behind us, a lot of municipalities have been looking at, I know DC's been raising the rent per square foot for restaurants that are using the public space.
We'll take note, but you can also propose that as an edit. I'm trying to look at, can't. Councilmember DeBala?
Yeah, I've got the budget resolution in front of me. And it says commercial property tax rate in it, as well as rubber and utility tax rate. And it does not, and it won't say vacant property tax, as it turns out. But it, commercial property tax rate is in here.
Is that the same as the inventory tax?
Nope.
But it is the thing we committed to looking at at the time. So at the time, we, the personal property, I can talk to you about it at some other time. But the personal property portion of a business tax is like the furniture. And so if you're a jewelry store, you have a high one, and if you're a bookstore, you have a high one, and if you're a coffee shop, it's lower, right? So it's not as equitable, so that's why at the time, many of us decided we wanted not do that and instead to do something else. And there's something else we wanted to ask about was the commercial property tax rate.
And I also just want to remind, for folks who may not be familiar, our border neighbors do not charge that, so we, like.
Well, that's a whole, we're going to get a briefing on that.
Yeah.
If he asks the question, we're going to hear about it.
Yeah, we'll hear about it. So that is, so I would encourage folks to kind of take a look at the resolution and some of the debate, because businesses such as like the SNS bead store decided to move to the DC side in large part because of that, because they have a lot of inventory that they were being taxed on. So it's basically any business that has stock, so to speak. And that is what they are being taxed on. That's not to say that, you know, as part of exploring staff, having staff take a look at different options, that is something that we could do. I guess the question for me is more around, how do we make sure that we're prioritizing and not just creating a whole bunch of bloat that would require a whole lot of staff time to explore options? You know, so I would encourage you, as you are looking at and suggesting ideas, to really think about, one, do you want to pay for external consultants to come in and give you the answer that's going to make you feel good? And two, is it a higher priority than the other things that are listed within that particular category?
Yes.
Councilmember?
So just so I, thank you, and so just so I understand that the, when the inventory tax was done away with, it was kind of flagged, like, we want to reexamine this, but in the reexamination, the determination was made, let's look at commercial property tax changes. So is, my question to my colleagues is, should commercial property tax be one of the revenue strategies that we consider to be a priority for the next two years?
I think the city manager.
There's a report coming. It's on the agenda.
It's on the agenda. It is noted as a budget priority for this fiscal year, which means it would be examined as part of the budget process. Now, whether or not the continuous examination of the commercial property tax for the next two fiscal years is something that the council wants to do, that's a different question. But I would say that we look at our budget priorities and before the budget process. So if, hey, during this budget cycle, we have a firm understanding of what we want to address and what our budget outline looks like, we say as a budget priority, hey, we want you to look at some options as it relates to the commercial property tax. That would be a budget priority. Now, if what we're saying is, hey, we want to explore new alternatives for revenue development, and the only reason I included, I will say, the only reason I looked at the railroad and utility and the vacant property tax, and we could basically say, we don't want to include our budget priorities here. We could say, it doesn't make sense to include our budget priorities in our long-term priorities because we already have a budget priority document, right? That's up for debate, but it did seem like we had a desire to do some additional analysis in the prior list of priorities, and I wasn't sure whether or not that was something that we still wanted to do. And if so, do we stick with what we have already agreed to as a council with the budget priority topics that were noted? Or are we coming up with some additional things for the next two years, if that makes sense?
Yeah, hope and question. I don't have the answer.
Yeah. Everyone can like noodle over it as you are writing your edits to this document. But I did flag it as something that is a point of discussion. Okay. The next item, so we did delete the explore ways to provide more equitable property tax assessment system, including providing property tax adjustments to residents in need. That was deleted because we had discussed the fact that it's really largely outside of cities' control for a lot of that, and we've been advocating, and we will continue to do so. But we wanted to try to focus these priorities on things that we have the ability and our staff have the authority to directly influence. Okay, so main event, environmentally sustainable community. Okay? So for the environmentally sustainable community, during the discussion that we had, there was not a desire to, there was lots of discussions around the possibility of modifying the objectives. But there really wasn't any clarity in terms of how we want to tweak the objectives. And so we've kind of landed on, yeah, maybe it makes sense to keep them the same. There are a number of places throughout the strategies where I just asked a few questions. So let's take the first one. Climate change mitigation, work towards net-zero greenhouse gas emissions goal. The first strategy was prioritize and accelerate policies and programs that implement the 2020 climate emergency response framework strategies for buildings, transportation, renewable energy, and fossil fuel-free community. And so my question was, in light of the council's FY twenty-six budget priorities discussion, And so my question was, um, in light of the council's FY twenty six budget priorities discussion, in which climate was identified as an important issue, but not as important as housing, traffic, and pedestrian safety and recreation, should this be prioritized beyond buildings and transportation? And-
Wait a second.
Uh, councilmember Schlegel.
Um, briefly, I would say, this is, this is a two-year set of priorities, so maybe things are looking up fiscally in the second year, and it's nice that we, I think it would be nice to continue to list renewable energy and fossil free community, um, fossil fuel-free community. Yeah, I'm losing my train of thought. Uh, maybe, yeah, maybe, I, I'll, I'll turn to my colleagues to say, do you think it's, it's more valuable to just focus on those two elements for two years?
Uh, councilmember DeBala.
So I, I, I like focusing on buildings and transportation. However, the four categories of the climate emergency framework are buildings, transportation, renewable energy, and fossil free community.
Okay.
So, so they're either all in or they're all out, because they're implied, because that's what's in the framework.
Okay. So I would ask that me, we, um, look at prioritize and accelerate problems, uh, policies and programs, um, because that gives the impression that we're telling staff to hurry up and put them out there. And if we are not, from a budgetary perspective, for the first year of our term, communicating that this is a, a priority in terms of where we want to ultimately spend money, that may be a challenge. So we may want to just play around with the words there. I, I defer to, to members of council. Um, we may want to play around with the words there to not make it seem as if they have to do all of these things, especially in light of the fact that we may be deprioritizing it from the perspective of the budget and the feds maybe. I think we were banking on the feds providing money.
Yeah, we were. So, so, so when this was written two years ago, it was a different situation. We didn't have a staff person, we didn't have a lot of things that we have now. So now we have people working on sustainability. Um, so, for example, in the second bullet, I think taking out expand would be fine. Continue the sustainability programs we have now. Two years ago, we didn't really have anything going.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Um, but I would, I would think prioritizing the most important policies and programs within the climate framework is exactly what we ought to be doing. So that's slightly different from what she said.
Okay.
It's like, figure out the priorities.
Versus accelerating to get it done.
Very, very, versus accelerating everything.
Yep. Okay, that was the original language from the priorities?
The other, the other-
Yeah, so if, if, if the goal is to tweak that language, to kind of take that urgency out?
Um, let me work on it.
Okay.
Um, and then the, the other thing I wanted to say was that when we talked about the priorities, climate ranked low, but as we started talking, it kept coming up again as part of something else. And so that, is that captured here anywhere? It is, in the fourth one, integrating, which is the one you took out. So, so maybe that, um, well, I, I don't, you, you haven't had a chance to explain what you were thinking there.
Yep.
But in the discussion about the budget for this year, that integration piece kept coming up.
Yeah, and, and so the, the point of that one, I marked it for deletion, and the, the point was need to follow what was left about whether this is already done. Um, so at the time, when, when this discussion was happening, the issue was there, you know, making sure that there was that nexus of partnership between, like, HCD staff and the sustainability manager, so that these, these, all of these different projects could kind of be baked together and have, like, energy efficiencies and combined with housing programs that would ultimately lead to something that could kind of combine separate aspects of the pri, um, of, uh, pro, program work. So it seemed to me like a lot of this was being done already, and I wasn't sure what we were asking staff to do beyond what they're already doing. Councilmember Hanzak.
Yeah, um, I, it seems to me that, I, I, it makes sense to me that integration is a goal. Um, integration is actually my, my profession. Um, I don't think that integration is exclusive to climate. So to me, this is a part and parcel of what the city manager does, is, uh, to increase efficiencies across government. He would, uh, he and the senior staff would look at where integration is most productive across all departments for any one of our priorities and for any other co-benefits that he's trying to unlock. Uh, you know, American local governments, and sorry, I'm saying this as, as I usually work in the international sphere on this issue, um, are known for being much better at integration across departments. And I'm quite sure that with the, um, experience that city manager, uh, Dispirito brings to our government, that that is probably something he's looking at quite intensely. Feel, feel free to comment if you'd like. I, I don't think it's necessary to call it out here.
Okay, so let's move to the next item, the climate change resilience, improve our ability to adapt to be resilient to local impacts of climate change. Um, for the first item, uh, build on the results of the stormwater resilience study. The question that I have, um, was, we should keep the item. It, it was something that was communicated as part of the FY twenty five budget as a priority and still needs some time to complete. So that's the LIDC kind of work, and so I think that's important for us to keep. However, with the last item, review and prioritize the 2019 resiliency recommendations and take initial steps forward on measures that produce co-benefits to heat island mitigation and equity-based resilience. Um, unclear about what the goal is for this effort and how they are different from the first bullet. The aspects regarding taking steps on measures to produce co-benefits seem to be very long-term and research-based.
Not in there?
Yes.
So I read that and I anticipate that, um, the, the actions would be things such as identifying, um, urban forestry priorities that have the co-benefits of addressing stormwater and heat island, uh, uh, problems that, and, and there, and that actually helps to address some of our equity issues. If you look at the urban forestry assessment and where the, uh, areas of the city are that are the most barren of trees and in the same areas that have a heat island issue. And so, I mean, I, that, to me, um, that was one of the resiliency recommendations. Um, mostly, we talked about only certain features like stormwater and climate, but, so I think this captures some of those other, um, uh, elements that were in the sustain, if this is the same as the sustainability report that we had, um, that carried forward on, on evaluating some of these issues. So maybe that's an example, maybe there are others, but.
Okay, councilmember Hanzak.
I, I think that this was one of the things I considered quite important. Um, I, I definitely don't think stormwater is the only area that needs to be, um, prioritized here, and I think that was a very good example of making sure that we are looking specifically at these kinds of issues as we look at, you know, the other two that are outlined here, emergency preparedness and stormwater. So, um, we already have a tree policy, right, but, um, and I, I, off the top of my head, I can't, I can't produce another good example, but that was a good one, and, um, I mean, a heat island mitigation effort, because heat, heating is, it is my recollection from reading the report, that heat, um, extreme heat is one of the biggest problems that we will face as a city in the next, um, five to 10 years, and we're already seeing it.
And flooding, which is also mitigated by, by, um, urban forestry, so.
Yes, but I mean, the he, heat being, I, as, if I remember correctly, actually, heat was higher than stormwater. So, um, and, and that speaks to me, because, um, stormwater across, the way our city is designed right now may not have as many, uh, negative, negative impacts locally on some of our most vulnerable population as heat will. And so to me, there are some other things that we might want to do. I mean, I, again, I'm not the expert on this, but there are cities that are painting some of their roadways white, um, to try to reduce heat in certain areas, but there, there could be any number of other things that we might want to do in addition to some of our tree cover things, and I'd like that to just be considered among the priorities.
Okay. Is it possible for, for councilmembers that, um, uh, to take a look at this to make sure that it's really clear that we're communicating what we're, what we want? Councilmember DeBala's like, it just needs to be rewritten.
Really? Okay.
If you could take a look at that to just make it a little, a little clearer, um-
I know that our, our, I believe our sustainability manager is currently on leave. Um, do we have other capacity for staff to, to see how this is understood, to make sure we are being as clear as possible? Um, okay.
Also the word, also the word, if I may, the word initial, I think we passed that.
Right. And I think that's, that's the piece. It, it, when I looked at it, I'm like, wait a minute, you know, how does the newer work, the LIDC work, keeping in mind the amount of staff that we have and what's going on, does that, and we made that a priority. We made certain projects associated with that report as a priority. So how does that juxtapose with this one? And so, is there some ways that we can kind of make it a little, little clearer for folks to know what exactly, within two years, we're asking them to try to accomplish? Councilmember Lemon.
Uh, well, for example, I'd be happy to take a, a stab at this, but could, instead of, um, identifying the 2019 resiliency recommendations, perhaps identify the 2023 tree cov, uh, canopy study, uh, which was, yeah.
Mm-hmm. And that kind of relates to the next item?
Before we, before we jump to page-
Councilmember, uh, Schlegel.
For both these, uh, for both one and two, on page thirteen, um, I really would, I don't know where it would fall, but, uh, I would love for two years to prioritize the use of city media for how-to education and information sharing. Um, there's a lot of stuff that filters into listservs of people saying, hey, um, it could be during an extreme weather event, what do I do? Um, or it could be, I'm trying to get an induction stove, who, how do I get a heavy up? A lot of people, there's goodwill on the one hand, and a lot of knowledge. So my question, my basic philosophy question to colleagues is, do you think that, that the energy transition or the, um, the preparedness piece is, should be left to, like, grassroots efforts? Or is there a role for the city without spending a lot of money or, but redirecting time of staff to, to provide better coordination of this information sharing and communication?
Well, that's true.
Yeah, I would say, you know, in terms of information sharing and, um, communication, that would be under the Engage Responsive Service Oriented Government, so hold that thought. Another thing is, I know that, um, Dory has been doing, for example, a lot.
There is a lot.
Our staff have been doing a lot to host, like, educational, um, activities for residents, and it's recorded and it's on our web. Um, so there, there are works that are, there is work that has already been happening, um, where our staff are educating the community around certain things like sustainability efforts they could do in their homes. City TV is recording it, and we're making it available on the web. Now, as part of our new website rollout, um, one thought may be, it, let's make sure it's a lot easier for our residents to be able to pinpoint where those, um, those resources are. So it's a little easier. Right now, the website is, it, it buries information, and I think the new website that we have will make that, like, finding that information a lot easier. Um, but definitely, let's, let's make sure that we flag that when we talk about, um, the Engage Service Oriented Government.
Thank you.
Okay, so, I, councilmembers, give me, give me some language on that last one. I, I know when I'm outside, I'm not yet. Okay. Okay, we are, we are making some moves. The next item, manage our community's natural resources sustainably. Protect, maintain, and improve the health of our urban forests. Yeah, that was one. So, kept the language the same. Um, the first was, um, originally adopt the multi-year urban forest management plan with a focus on no net loss, increase in biodiversity, um, and equity. And so there was an urban forest master plan that was provided in 2023. And so the question is, you know, do we just want to say aspects of implementation or continued implementation? Councilmember DeBala.
I think implement the plan, and I think on the second one, um, continue collaborative tree planting with a focus on, and, so we don't need to be expanding a pilot project, we're past that.
That's what I thought, yep.
But it is, you're keeping the focus on addressing, you know, the worst.
Yes.
And then on the third, yeah, so those, so that's, that's your questions, I think.
Oh, I think I might have, yeah, I thought we already took it out.
So it originally said, um-
Oh, but we already, you took it, oh, no, you didn't take it out, I see.
No, I flagged it as-
Okay, so it sounds like implement is fine and continue, getting rid of the expand the pilot, right? Okay. Okay, all right. See no hands? We're gonna move to engage responsive service-oriented government. All right, so I'm gonna start just giving folks a quick little overview of this one in terms of what we did. Okay, um, so we cut hire and, and onboard a new city manager, we took that out.
Sure.
Um, we also, uh, took out the review and informed the city's approach to public safety. Um, and that was related to the Public Safety Task Force recommendations. And as I mentioned, I've moved the recommendation follow-up under management and processes. Um, and then the improve service delivery and reduce administrative burden by updating internal policies, IT infrastructure, software, and support staff in doing their jobs. We've done a lot, and that, this question is for the city manager, but we've done a lot in terms of the acquisition of tech to, to help our residents, I'm sorry, to help our staff in terms of HR technologies. Um, we've done a lot in terms of upgrading websites, and, and there's just been a lot of infrastructure upgrades that have been happening. So I felt like that was one that we could, we could take away for, for right now, specifically as it's focused more on, um, what the staff need.
You're talking about the tools.
The tools. That was when we were, that, that one was more about making sure that the council, which we did, provide funding for those, um, infrastructure improvements. Um, so the first item, advancing city communications with residents and adopt innovative culturally appropriate initiatives to improve public engagement and collaboration with residents, particularly with residents who face barriers to participating in municipal government activity. Why didn't we flag this?
Where are you?
This is the Engage Responsive Service Oriented Government.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm dr, I was looking down on it.
And I'm gonna flag that for myself. That should probably be streamlined a little bit.
You could just maybe start, sorry.
Yeah, send me some, send me some suggestions.
Just jump in with improved, let's leave everything out before improved, maybe.
Yeah. I did, I did not catch that one. Usually, I'm, I'm a little better at saying, wait a minute, these are too many words. Um-
And so, oh, this tough one, this one, she was-
So-
I'm, I'm not completely remembering the discussion the last time, but improved communic, advanced communications, improved communications is sort of one thing. And adopt appropriate addition, and improving public engagement and collaboration is another.
Mm-hmm.
And I would like to focus at this point on improving public engagement and collaboration.
Mm-hmm.
Because the s, uh, the sec, the next one that you've got that's left is about individual interactions with the city.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So that, I don't know if that's where Roger, uh-
Yep, that's where, that's what Roger-
You were going with that, but, so, that's what I'm thinking.
So under this one, um, the first strategy was improve the city's current communication tools, including the city's website, social media tools, low-tech solutions, and that recognize our community's techno, technological divide and support councilroom communications. Um, as the staff are working on a new city website, do we want this to focus more on council communications to residents? And the technology needs there, or do we want to get rid of this altogether? I know that, you know, there's still been conversations around, how do we make sure that we, as members of council, have the equipment that we need or the, the mechanisms we need to be able to more effectively communicate to our constituencies?
Are you, can I ask, are you referring to technologies, or are you referring to, like, access to either software or, or mechanisms within the, like, for example, I don't want another piece of equipment to carry around, but I might like to have a way for us to each have a website or some, or where we can, I don't know, something like that. So I don't want it to be exclusive- or some, or where we can, I don't know, something like that. So I don't want it to be exclusively a reference to technologies.
Correct.
Yeah, I, I, I do think that that's something that has fallen a little bit, by the way, because we, we were hoping to get, make more headway on that, but we had to focus on other things last, last term. So, yeah, I think a website for, a council member website, for example, or inputs to newsletters that are more streamlined to make it easier for all of us. Tools like maybe, you know, uh, the county, county council members, for example, have, can do translations through their, their websites. I mean, just knowing whether any of that would be possible would be great. But the, and not, so not just technology though, but more, more streamlined and clear ways that the city council members are, are engaging with our staff to support communications might be helpful.
Helpful, okay. So, um, open to, to suggestions on language for that one, but I kind of figured that would be where we want to go. The, the review lessons learned from more, from recent, more targeted community engagement efforts and apply them to, to improve public input, engagement, and collaboration. I feel like staff have done this.
Go on, I'm sorry.
Yeah, um, I think that they've, I think that they have reviewed lessons learned. And I think that they do more in terms of door-to-door, out in the field, recording things, engaging with key stakeholder groups. So, I, um, thought that this could be deleted, but we keep the adopt ways to improve accessibility of community meetings, especially for residents whose dominant language is not English, those who are deaf, and others who may face barriers to engagement with city government. And, um, the others, conduct innovative culturally appropriate outreach and education with residents in ways to connect with issues relevant to them. It seems like this language kind of duplicated some of the language that was in the community of belonging priorities. So I just want to flag that for folks to take a look. And then the, um, the last item was consider ways to effectively leverage and partner volunteers, tenant, neighbors associations, other community groups. I feel like we do this, I would prefer that the coordination is focused on vulnerable populations that was communicated in the community of belongings. So, these were flagged because it kind of felt like, hey, we need to take a look at what are some of the things that we're saying in the community of belonging section? And whether or not some of this may need to be pulled there versus as part of the, um, engage and responsive service oriented development. It just, it just seemed like we were repeating similar themes in different sections. Councilmember Sligo?
So I'm remembering now, thank you, that we, uh, councilmember Lammon had been talking about outreaches to congregations, houses of worship, and other NGOs. And I wonder if, we were talking about that in the context of, um, of vulnerable populations like immigrants, but I wonder if maybe it's better to put it in this broader category that we, in general, because we don't know what might come down the pike. And like if there's a, a heat wave, and, and we know we worked on the, these strategies and worked on those connections that are, that are now like strong relationships where there's kind of like the modern equivalent of phone trees. I think that would, it would be nice to put that priority in here rather than maybe specifically in, um, community belonging.
That's really helpful feedback, and definitely please, um, offer some suggestions in your work. Councilmember DeBala?
Yeah, a couple of things. Going back to the overall statement, if this is not about just one-way communication, if this is about culturally appropriate engagement, et cetera, then maybe this does belong in community of belonging, but for, for sure, I want to see it somewhere. Because it's really important to me. And so I was a little, like, seeing across that was a little, whoa.
Just trying to figure out where we want to put it.
It's where, it's where, yeah. And.
Yeah.
I, I think there's still some merit in asking staff to continue or expand using targeted innovative efforts. Clearly, a lot of progress in the last couple of years. But clearly also some more consistency and some more, some more internal coordination about how we could be useful. So, so reviewing lessons is done, and people are working on it. But I think there's still something there to do, and I can offer some, some words there. Okay? That's it, sorry.
All right. So, so this is one where, you know, definitely as you're taking a look and trying to figure out where things need to be. Um, open to suggestions on that. The next one was improve policies and processes to enhance resident interaction with the city government and the council, including requests for government services, complaint systems, and code enforcement. And so, when I talked in the community of belonging, there was language around complaints and, and making sure that they're being addressed in an equitable way. I had flagged whether or not this is something that, you know, depending on where we want to put them, but there's this whole section about complaints. And, um, so there was one, review city processes and identify methods to improve them, including traffic calming, sidewalk requests, and recommend, recommend, recommended by the Complete Safe Streets Committee. Now, we've done a substantial amount of work on this. And right now, we're try, in the implementation phase, so I, I kind of struck that. Review and strengthen the process for new council members, onboarding, technical assistance, and ongoing support. We've completely transformed the way we've done council orientation. I don't know, you all tell me whether or not it's been good enough or we need to keep it.
I don't know, it doesn't seem like we know what we're doing.
You are, you're settling in just fine.
Smoother than last time.
But I did flag that there was a lot of work that was done there. Identify improved approaches to tracking residents' inquiries to ensure staff are responsive within timeframes. I do think that's something important that we need to keep. And then there was, this language, the last one, was language that I tried to say, okay, we're, we have the committee work, and the committees were previously under the, the communications base. I said, okay, well, let's pull it over to the processes and make it more around continue efforts to create more effective and engaged city committees that reflect the diversity of our community, ensure the city responds to recommendations made by these committees and task force in a meaningful way. And so we could then identify in terms of the list of major projects, and I've noted, we could include the relevant task force and committee reports that the council want to prioritize for follow-up there. The idea is that we could work to have these as parts of future agendas post-budget. But I, I wanted to try to make sure that we could word this particular priority versus having Public Safety Task Force recommendations here, Complete Streets Task Force recommendations there, Sustainable Banking recommendations here. This is kind of crafted in a way to kind of say, hey, we want follow-up on these, um, reports that we're getting out of our committees. So, open to, don't have to do it now, it's ten o'clock, and I know it's late, but just wanted to make sure that you all were aware of this, so when you're going through and making your edits, it's something that, that you can kind of think through when you're providing feedback.
May I make one comment?
Yes, sure.
So, this talks about creating more effective and engaged city committees. I think that, um, there should be some way in this language of reflecting that part of what we're trying to do is, um, give them clear guidance on what we want from them. So, um, it's, it's not just acting on the recommendations, but it's framing our questions, you know, and, um, and our requests in a way that engage on topics that are really important to us and that we have every intention on following through on.
No, I agree, and I've, I've heard from members of committees who've said, look, we spent a lot of time coming up with a lot of good work, and we just feel like nothing is coming from it, from that, so.
It's a question of framing the terms of reference for them very clearly, so they know when they are delivering on what we're asking for.
Mm-hmm.
Mayor?
Yes.
I, yeah, just that, um, I, I, I really appreciate that you added that about responding to recommendations they made these committees and task force in a meaningful way. It's always a little bit vague, and I was suggesting, like, incl, like, I'm gonna suggest, including like, removing, changing, or adding to priority objectives and strategies as appropriate. So that, so that we recognize this is a living document, and, and we flag that we might need to add or change things or remove things on the basis of these, when we go back and review what these different groups had to say.
Councilmember, how's that?
Just a quick note, and this is, this is really just for the city staff. I, I am very comfortable with the, with the new language proposed here, but since we are removing the, the bullet one about processes and methods, including traffic calming and sidewalk requests as recommended by the Complete Safe Streets Committee, I know that we have, we have indeed done really good work. But the one thing that I'm not sure yet whether we're gonna see is whether the city will in fact proactively suggest places in the city where we need improved traffic calming and sidewalk requests. And, and that remains to be determined in my mind whether we will see that coming out of the city, and I'm just hereby saying that I would like to see that, um, coming up. Thank you.
May I just add that that was one of the recommendations from the Complete Safe Streets.
Exactly, no, but since we're specifically, we had called it out, and now it's coming off, I want to just flag that. Thank you. And because there's a meeting coming right up.
Thank you, councilmember, thank you, councilmember Hansak, and, and definitely feel free, you know, if there's still outstanding Complete Safe Street Committee recommendations that have not been implemented as part of, you know, the work that staff have done thus far, then that is something that we can continue to make sure through that, that other bullet that we, we have a regular cadence in terms of following up on. So, as was discussed, the review and inform the city's approach to public safety. The recommendations from the task force are going to be covered under what we just discussed in terms of the committee, um, item. And then, um, the update, the Council Resolution 201745 is an item that will be added to the council's role in agenda. So, um, this is probably Jesse's first time hearing that. We need to make sure we add that item to the upcoming, um, list of things that we'll need to schedule. Okay. All right, and I think we are, we are at the last item. So, we've tweaked the language to be housing and community development for improved and equitable quality of life. There was a mention of.
I'm sorry, may I ask a question?
Sure.
So, um, so you, you have deleted all of the internal, the behind-the-scenes stuff because it's all in process?
Right.
I'm just guessing.
Yep. So, yeah, so, like, the systems, update, implement human resources policies, is, is, all of that is in the works. Follow-up actions based on recommendations, wage study, all of that is in the works.
It's okay with me.
Councilmember Sligo?
Could I, could I just make, um, as a new member, and just for the record, so are we closed out on the reimagining Public Safety Task Force? Like, everything was, everything that was recommended was, a determination was made and actions were taken?
So, there were a number of recommendations, and at one point, we did have a follow-up, and I, I think that it'll be important for us to have a follow-up again. There were a number of recommendations that we had indeed implemented. There were some that the task force made that, um, based on staff discussion or the changing landscape, um, we didn't have to do. And then there were some, um, I don't want to speak completely that there are some that are just completely not touched at all, because I don't believe they are, but I think that there were some that related more to things that were not directly under the city's ability to directly influence. Where, so like, for example, there was a lot of things that related to aspects of schools. And so, we interact with the schools, we engage with the schools, but, you know, in terms of our ability to require MCPS to teach students around know your rights, you know, we, we can encourage it, and we did, and now, I think they are. But, you know, in terms of our ability to have MCPS do that, it was limited. So there were, it's important to keep in mind that the Public Safety Task Force recommendations did not, were not just limited to the police department. They included safety as it relates to lighting, they included things around, um, schools and policies, state policies, advocacy. So there were some things that definitely were in our ability to, to do that our police department did, and then there were some that we had to influence, but we weren't necessarily able to directly control. But I think having the, um, having that on the list of kind of things
Circle backs?
That we could kind of come back and circle back on would be helpful for folks.
Thank you.
So you circle back with this?
On page seventeen.
It's the committees, it's the, the recommend, the item on the committees where we're asking for committee staff to update on the status of, um, identified, um, committee reports. The housing and community development for an improved equitable quality of life. So, during the last conversation, we had lots of back and forth about whether or not we were gonna move things, separate housing, not separating, we ultimately kept it all together. And so, in terms of tweaks, uh, the, um, continue to build partnerships with nonprofits, foundations, financial institutions, county, state, and other outside entities to expand affordable housing options in the city. The staff are doing that as part of their job. My question was whether or not it's something we want to continue to emphasize as a priority. The other item that was tweaked was revise sections of the housing code, specifically sections in rent stabilization. We had talked about rent stabilization before. And it was part of the priority before, but I wanted it to be a little bit more specific. Continue to work on and advocate for policies related to tenants' rights, including displacement and good cause, but we can tweak this language. The, the purpose of that one was really to kind of drill in on the fact that there was a desire for us to kind of have a priority regarding our tenants. And so, open to suggestions on how we want to deal with that. And then, um, for the others, the other that was related to transportation, improve transportation planning, design, and implementation to create a safer, more environmentally sustainable and more racially equitable, whoa, that's, uh, okay. So, one of the things that we did have was work with State Highway to address safety at dangerous intersections. Previously, it was based on, um, identified by the Montgomery County Predictive Safety Analysis and Tacoma Park Police Data. The question for you all is, do we want to actually have this priority focused on specific intersections that we want to really drill home S H A about, right? Develop our agreed-upon, um, as a council approach and really put the pressure on S H A to address, like Tacoma Junction. Uh, for, for newer council members, we met with the Administrative Pines. There, they've been doing lots of kind of tinkering on the edges for the junction. Staff have been working quite closely with S H A, with them tinkering around the edges. But I think that we may, there may be a time for this council to say, let's, as a council, identify how we want S H A to move forward with, with this particular area and move that next step in terms of trying to get some, some real change. And I see the city manager has some feedback on that.
I guess just one thing to think about is whether, when you name one intersection, will, or two, will it be considered an exhaustive list? Perhaps it might be better to say, direct staff as, you know, as you go, you know, as situations unfold, as, um, problems emerge. You know, of course, we can take direction at any time to work with S H A on these. It, it might be better to not specifically identify sites or locations, because you can otherwise provide that to us at any time. I, I would just be a little concerned that folks might see this and just see, okay, they've got that, that intersection or this stretch, but what about these other three? You know, and then it's, there'd be an assumption that we're not interested, or we don't recognize it, or, or we just won't do it, when that's, none of the above is true. Maybe being just a little more general here might help you avoid that kind of trap? Just a suggestion.
Councilmember?
Lynn.
Lammon, sorry.
Thank you. I would like to recommend that we not prioritize intersections where we have heard that there are costly capital improvement-type, uh, solutions that, that are the ones that have been on the table, because we know we're not gonna make headway with, there's no money for that, as S H A has told us repeatedly. And, and that's true for a couple of things that people have discussed lately. I would rather that we focus on calling them dangerous intersections, and then the interpretation of that, to me, is where are the places where the. And then the interpretation of that to me is where are the places where the real risks are in the, and the pedestrian safety issues around Tacoma Langley and around the Purple Line. To me, that's where it's going to be shifting over time. That's why I, I appreciate the comments from the city manager that if the language is more general and it doesn't suggest that we're putting a top priority on an intersection where, you know, brick and mortar solutions are the only ones that are really going to make much of a difference, then we will get better, better results from S H A.
I will say, based on the meeting we had today with Purple Line, they don't have money for Purple Line pedestrian safety improvements either.
Okay, never mind. Just everybody wear caution yellow and walk really quickly.
We just have to pass out vests. But I, but I hear you all, like it, it, it makes sense. I think we still just, I do think that we need to tweak some of this language that's here to make it a little bit more open. The, the plan at the time was to make it more data-driven in terms of focusing on those intersections. There was, there was some prioritization that was behind this.
Yes.
And so the idea now is, okay, how do we want to clearly communicate where that prioritization is? Is it through the data, which is what's here? Is it through staff recommendations and feedback? How do we want to make sure that we're communicating that we are focusing those efforts around priorities, prioritized or areas that have been identified as a priority? Councilmember Schlegel, I think I saw your hand first.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's interesting because there's so much perception of danger is almost bigger of an issue. You know, it's a quality of life issue. But when you're, when you're setting priorities, I think you have to look at the data that you have. For example, there's a perception that a certain intersection on Eastern Avenue is extremely dangerous. When I looked at D dot data, I hadn't seen any crashes there in five years. So I, I'll just point that out. And I would, I would say in terms of data sets, D dot does have data that we should use for Eastern Avenue. And I don't know whether S H A has data for New Hampshire Avenue on the part that's by county.
Montgomery County does.
Montgomery County.
As part of the Montgomery County predictive, they did include.
Okay, because that's right, because our jurisdiction goes across the, across the line. So adding in D dot would be helpful for the area around like Laurel Avenue and Eastern and, and, and by the church.
And Councilmember Lamon?
In answer to your question of how to sort of set priorities, what metrics to use for something like this. So Montgomery County Vision Zero Equity Task Force on traffic and pedestrian safety, they overlay information about accident and injury with information, demographic information. And I mean, what you see is almost a direct overlap between communities that are poor and vulnerable and communities where traffic safety issues are a significant issue for especially pedestrian safety. And I think probably Tacoma Langley Crossroads, if I remember correctly, is the one key area within the county that kind of was a red flag under that study. So I think, you know, that's a set of data to, to look at, which is their Vision Zero, you know, demographic data overlaid on the traffic safety data.
So it sounds like data, data-driven. Maybe we don't have to be uber-specific in, that's a technical term at ten thirty-nine. We don't have to be super explicit in terms of the full list of data that's available. But making sure our staff know what data are available, but we want it to be a data-driven approach. Councilmember, how's that?
Just quickly, I mean, if we wanted to add, I, I agree with that. I think if you wanted to add anything to make it a little bit more specific than we had it before, I would, I would encourage us to put something about, you know, with a focus on promoting walkability and, and cycling or something like that, you know, so, because that is, that is where we'd like to head. And that would also support, that would be co-benefits to our most vulnerable populations. And that's very important right now in light of the Purple Line stations and where we do see the most accidents. But that might help just clarify what, what our goals are for S H A.
That's really helpful. Councilmember DeBala?
Yeah, I like that. I have a couple of things to say. I, I do, whether we write it down or not, I do think that having laid the groundwork with Administrator Pine on the junction that we don't want to let up and we can recognize that the likelihood of financial success at this point is pretty small. But I don't feel like we should just sort of back off and pretend we never said it. I have a question about the first one, adopted Vision Zero Initiative, which is in part linked to a, in, in part linked to a grant that we may not be getting. And my question is, having Visi, Vision Zero goals is, is straight, extremely important. I get that. However, given what else we've got going on, that we want to implement the new data-driven process, we're probably going to have to make some adjustments. That was a bullet that I would, I thought we were adding. And given all this other stuff, how sure are we that we want to put a lot of energy into adopting a zero vision, Vision Zero Initiative? Instead of some of these other things?
It's a good question.
Excellent.
As, as important as it is, because it'll, it would, among other things, help us get more money. But if that whole thing is potentially, I don't know, I'm just raising the question. We don't have to solve it tonight.
And I think, I think that would be, we can follow up with staffs about that. Because I do, like, while I hear, I hear you, we have a lot of other things to do. I will say that education around pedestrian safety, particularly for our Spanish-speaking residents, is critical.
Well, maybe that's what we said.
And I mean, if you drive on University Boulevard, you will see people jumping blindly into construction zone areas trying to cross the street. So, you know, it is really important for us now, whether or not it's an initiative, we would need to go back and take a look at, at what we had or identifying potential components. But I do think that there may be some things that we need to do to try to help with improving pedestrian safety and dealing with aspects of transportation. And then the last one is advocate for transportation improvements and impact access and safety of Tacoma Park residents through basically the Purple Line Metro and the like. So definitely for folks, please, I don't want to, because we're, we're at ten forty-three. Make sure that you take a look at these and offer any suggestions. And, and again, I tried to flag the list. And just as a, a flag for the city manager, we do need to update the list of ongoing activities. And I think there was a couple of projects like the Maple Avenue item. There's just a couple of other things that I just wanted to make sure that I was fully aware of the status and how they may relate to some of these priorities.
For certain types of projects you're talking about or?
Yes, the major projects initiatives. So I know like the new bikeways, we're, we're working on the design work there. Purple Line is of course monopolizing all of our brain cells. The Maple Avenue Connectivity Project, I know that that's still ongoing. The Metropolitan Branch Trail Upgrade, I don't know why I thought that was done, but I could be wrong about that. So if we could just have somebody take a look, just so that we can make sure that, that we're clear on where the projects are. Councilmember Hansaacken?
I don't know if it'd be considered major, but right now the Flower Avenue, what is it called? Fly, Flower Avenue Connectivity or Bike Way or something, it's coming into the city right there on the north end next to the Purple Line. So I, you know, I don't know if it deserves, because it doesn't come in that far, but it's a very critical piece. So I wouldn't mind if it were flagged there.
And then the, the last, plan to prepare for development in the city. So these, we kind of kept the same because some of, some of them and some we deleted. So continue to provide support for small businesses, especially those impacted by the Purple Line construction is something we have to do. And we need to continue to prioritize. Explore options of providing services, including through direct assistance and partnerships for businesses located outside the areas covered by existing business associations. I know that that's still a challenge. That's something that we're trying to work on. Attract new businesses to Tacoma Park and facilitate the growth of existing businesses, particularly those that help meet workforce and local ownership goals. I, I deleted that one and, but it's a question for, for folks. I flagged it for deletion. Is this something that staff is doing, but we don't have much control over the outcome? Should, should we remove this from the council priorities, but understand that staff will continue to work with partners to attract businesses to the area? So that's the, the question on that one. The next one, the edit was leverage both, leverage both public and private stakeholders to accomplish the goal of developing a rec center. Because that was the, the project that was communicated as part of our priorities. We, we have lights in the library, we're building walls in the library and the community center as well. So I thought that it would make sense for us to focus this one on the rec center itself. And then the next, work with the county to complete the minor master plan process. That's done, so took that out. And then the last is continue to coordinate with the county as it relates to planning and zoning and development issues affecting the city, which is something we will continue to do. Councilmember Lamon?
Sorry to talk so much tonight. On the leveraging activities blah, blah, towards the recreation center, we also talked about how in this coming year and actually for the next three years, there isn't going to be a new recreation center there physically. Because even if we started tomorrow to, to do everything towards that, it's going to take time for us to get the wheels in motion. So we talked also about the importance of figuring out if we can continue to provide some level of ongoing services, you know, that would improve the current lot of people who, who have only that recreation building and whether there's an opportunity there with the library site, et cetera, et cetera. So if there was some way to reflect in here that this is a priority that does not exclude trying to figure out how to up the service delivery level in the meantime in that neighborhood, I think it would be, it would be a good idea because it is something that we have asked the, the city manager and his team to look into, at least for library services and some of the other things that could fit in.
No, totally agree. That was something that prior councils have been asking for quite some time to see about the possibility or the feasibility of continuing to have that satellite, like satellite library location continue to function and the costs associated with that. And, and, yep. And some, some aspects of rec services. But again, that's not to say that we're not going to continue to provide recreational services at the current location. It's just expanding that access. So if, if folks think that that is also something that we want to highlight as part of the priorities for the next two years, trying to figure out how to get money for the, the recreation development process, which takes many years to do and lots of money, as well as continuation of maintaining the satellite location, which also takes people and money to do. We can, we can definitely make sure that we're having that conversation as we continue to work through priorities. Councilmember Schlegel?
I, I would recommend or suggest that we, we mention Prince George's County in both of those areas. As we know, and Manager Disperio, you've, you've mentioned that there are many Prince George's County residents using the temporary library location. And also it's a, when you look at the map, there's a huge gap in recreation centers between Hyatt's Bill and Long Branch. And the idea of, of making it a priority to try to engage with Prince George's, maybe Prince George's branch of M N C P P C for that project could be, could be a valuable thing to prioritize as, as another channel for pursuing.
Okay.
I had.
Councilmember Schlegel?
Circle, I wanted to circle back to the page on housing. Where are we? Lost it. Oh yeah, page twenty. Just one thing, I had a question about if we could focus the, under, for number one, a range of safe, high-quality, portable green. Then in the strategies, the third one says revise sections of the housing code, specifically sections on rent stabilization. And I, I wondered whether we could focus or clarify that a little bit. Like what is our goal in revising sections on rent stabilization? Is it change, like changing the amount of revenue available from such properties? Or is it ensuring that landlords can afford to do upgrades and capital improvements? Like I wanted to know, I think if we're going to prioritize, what is our goal there?
Yeah, so, so the goal actually kind of sort of does align with the objective that there's a range of housing. What we've heard time and time again was, and has been, and this actually came up as we were talking about our housing credits, that our rent stabilization law is more restrictive than the county's law. And it is, and there are municipalities in Montgomery County that don't have rent stabilization at all. So what we've heard time and time again is we have to figure out how to kind of tweak our rent stabilization law, which hasn't been touched in quite some time. Otherwise, there's no real incentive for people to build rental housing in the city of Tacoma Park when they can just go to the county line and they'll get something that's more lenient. Or they can go to another municipality and they would get something that wouldn't even require rent stabilization. Now, I'm not saying that we need to get rid of rent stabilization. I'm just saying in the light, in light of everyone else making certain changes in terms of how they're dealing with rent stabilization, it's important for us to look at a law that we haven't touched in decades to make sure that it's, it's not prohibiting the ability for us to provide access to housing. And I see the city manager has a, yeah.
So, so I remember that we were talking about affordability, quality and quantity. And so is this idea of tweaking the rent stabilization, is that, are we saying it's focused on quantity? Or, and, and not quality? You know, so I'm, I'm wondering like, because there are ways we could tweak it where we would make sure that like these older buildings truly got upgrades for, you know, appliances, energy efficiency. I know landlords who have been saying like, I just can't capitalize stuff and I've got countertops from the nineteen seventies. That's, that's the quality side.
Right. And that was, those were some aspects that were touched. I would encourage folks to take a look at our Housing Economic Development Strategic Plan because it kind of outlines the rationale for a lot of the protect, produce, preserve. So the, the credits that we put forward. Yep, the tax credits. Yes. Some of it was designed to try to get at some of those issues. Like what are some ways in which we can not only incentivize people to create more units, but also to improve the quality of the units, do substantial upgrades to the buildings that they have right now? But that's a little different from, well, that's very different from the rent stabilization law, which currently restricts the rate in which you can increase rents or restricts how long you, how much time you have.
Before it kicks in.
Before it kicks in, which what we're hearing is creating a lot of financial challenges with getting the financing necessary to build in the city. So again, like Montgomery County has something different than what we have. They're, you know, they're twenty-something years. But, but we do need to take a look at what our policies are to see how they may be, need to be tweaked in order to try to make sure that it's not, it's not continuing to perhaps disincentivize the creation of new housing.
So more about quantity and less about quality?
More about quantity.
Some of us think we attempted to handle quality in October.
Yep. I'm sorry, I cut you off. Manager, City Manager Disperio?
I was just going to suggest, it's a very big topic and.
Of course.
Mayor and council haven't had a really dedicated conversation on it yet. And that's Mayor and Council's pleasure, a, a work session at some point where staff could bring a lot of information, data, historical, current, maybe get some sense of comparable or, or at least nearby communities, what's the market. And, you know, we would stand by to take direction in terms of the scope of that conversation. But we could collaborate a little bit on that and try and have them bring meaningful information to you all when you're ready to have it. I think this might take a little time to prepare. But getting event, you know, some direction from you all in advance might be helpful to staff when, you know, should it be your pleasure to have such a work session? uh, might be helpful to staff when, you know, should it be your pleasure to have such a work session?
Okay, I, I think my concern is that um, it, it looks like we're, we're pre-agreeing, if we go with that, on that strategy for getting more um rental housing built is revising the rent stabilization. And, and I'm concerned that just saying, well, that is the strategy could result in um the removal of rent stabilization for existing properties and the displacement of people, which is something we don't want.
Yeah, no, I, I would encourage, so this, the, the rent stabilization was listed as part of the prior council priorities and it probably was listed before that. And it was because as part of the Housing and Economic Development Strategic Plan document, which was developed, I want to say in twenty nineteen, staff did a lot of work to go through and understand our market. What are some of the things that we need to do to produce housing, to preserve, to protect our renters? And so for, for the most part, it provided a pretty decent work plan of all of the things that we needed to tackle. So um rent stabilization was one of those things where we knew coming down the pike, county was talking about their rent stabilization. Montgomery County, Prince George's County has a separate rent stabilization law. Um, we knew that uh, there were other municipalities that were kind of different. And we had heard time and time again, when it comes to development, about some of the challenges with our civilization law.
When it's fixed in place for forty years, then there begins this, begins to be this lag.
Right.
Um, but it's such a delicate thing when you don't want to have displacement.
Right, and so that's why, again, you know, as part of the housing section for this document, we mentioned tenants' rights and displacement, right? So we have two priorities that are part of this section. One is to say, hey, we want to make sure we're, we're encouraging the creation of housing in our community because we know we need it. And we've heard time and time and time again, rent stabilization law needs to be tweaked um because of all of the things that are happening around us. But we also have added aspects of a priority around protecting our tenants and looking at displacement as a separate item. All right, any other council member?
One more thing on housing. So I, I think, I think we talked about this last time, uh, but someone remind me. So in the first bullet, expanding affordable housing options, um, we, when we did the ta- tax credits, we, we had several pieces and the last one, last two were tenant protections, which is in here, and missing middle housing, which is maybe not in here. So we were gonna address those two pieces after we did the tax credits. And so do you see expand affordable housing options as including the missle, miss- missing middle housing work that we were talking about doing? And, and given the changes, all the changes that are going on, what we wanted to do might need some pretty serious revision. But I don't want to lose the idea that we, that we committed to, uh, to look in at that piece specifically.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm missing where you're saying the expanding.
So in the first strategy, it says to expand affordable housing options in the city. So by that, do you en- do you mean by that to include the, the leftover work on missing middle housing?
I did, but, but.
Okay.
But I, I think that for this one, we do, I need to follow up with Devon, because we're, we're doing certain things. And so I want to make sure that we're clear on what it is we really want to get out of this one.
Right, okay.
Because the goal was initially expanding, um. Right.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, okay, so, so that's one for you to check with Devon. Okay, got it.
Okay, uh, councilmember Hanzak.
La- on the last, very last uh bullet, uh, sorry, the last um objective, um, um, is that all right? We need to back to that one, okay. Um, hopefully pushes to the end. Um, I just wanted to flag a couple of things. Uh, if we are removing the bullet about the minor master plan, which was very specific to the Washington Adventist and that was a huge amount of bandwidth for everybody, I just wonder um if it is useful to include here a strategy that is specific to the Adventist site, given how large that development is and how much bandwidth that will take from the staff. So something like work with the county and private and public actors to encourage that the Adventist site provides an optimal array of community vent benefits as per the, and then, I don't know, the, the plans or something. Is that, I don't know if that's necessary, but it obviously is gonna take a lot of time, so to me it should, it deserves a call out. Um, and for, let me go ahead and finish that thought. This is a sep- separate, but semi-related in terms of the fact that it was also in the MMPA plan. Um, uh, was, was included as a reference. Work with the county uh, and private and public actors, uh, or no, work with the county to ensure that PBEs and MCPS, to ensure that PBEs is prioritized for renovation in the next two years. I, to me, again, deserves a shout out, because I hope that staff will be able to carve out some time with us to help that happen.
So adding school.
Any, any issue, any, any issue with that city manager? Would you, would that be useful at all? I mean, now you're gonna do it anyway, but I, I, I feel like it, it makes it explicit also for the community to see that that's what we're up to and that's what we're expecting.
Specific reference to that.
Yeah, I mean, those are two huge projects eh, eh, to me on, in equal order with the recre- recreation center. I don't know if, I don't know if others agree on that, but.
I, I think they're different in that.
They are different types of things, yeah.
Rec center, we have some authority and control over, but the Washington Adventists and what they choose to do on their property, we don't have much.
No, but we do have a lot of engagement, um, and I.
And there's, and there are other, there are other privately owned properties throughout the city that we want to try to influence. But at the end of the day, we don't have direct say-so.
Could be just a general reference to engagement with um private property owners. Because again, there are multiple, you know, mo- well, we're aware of multiple locations that are potential for redevelopment.
Are there, eh, this is my naivety on, on development processes. Are there other um sites across the city where opt- uh, where um community benefits are a potential uh, uh
Yeah.
piece of that development in substantial way in comparison to the Adventist site in terms of its scale and uh size? I guess to me, that's, that implies a certain level of effort that is, is larger. That, that is why I call, I'm shouting it, calling it out.
It, it, it depends. I mean, parcels can be assembled and then you've got a larger parcel, something that hypothetically could happen in the future in other locations. The Adventist site may or may not be developed, and if it is, it might only be in small pieces at a time. I mean, all that would have a bearing on the public benefit piece and how it plays out. So maybe it's best to not be that specific.
I, eh, living adjacent to the hospital site right now, uh, I feel extremely strongly that it is a huge piece of property uh, with huge development potential as well. And we would do well to be on the case and make it a priority, to be chasing folks about what's happening and kind of, uh, you know, making it a priority. And, and I'm sorry to do that.
Making what they're spurring their development a priority or should?
Partnering with them, reaching out, proactive outreach, um, to fa- to, to, to follow up on things, uh, even bringing ideas to the table if we had some. I, I guess that's what I'd like to see, and I, and I'm sure, I'm sure staff will be doing that. I just, um, to me, it deserves a bigger shout out than other pieces of property in the city, but maybe I lack perspective.
I mean, it's within your ability as a council to do it, of course, but it is one particular piece of non-city property when there are others in the community. And I don't know if it, if you want to just call it out, I suppose you can. Uh, but there are other potential sites in addition. And it's up to you whether you wanna, how specific you all want to be.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm pressing on this because I think it's a huge parcel of land. It's much bigger than any other parcel I am aware of, and it previously provided a large amount of community benefit in the form of a hospital, which is now zero. So to me, it, it definitely deserves a greater amount of attention. It's a massive abandoned, we have other abandoned buildings in the, in the city to be sure. But the size and scale of this and the fact that it previously provided public benefit is a substantial uh priority to me.
Thank you, councilmember Hanzak, councilmember Sligo.
Uh, councilmember Hanzak, uh, to what you said, I would add like, that because of its central location, if it improves anything going in there, it could improve walkability a lot in the community. But uh, the, the one I wanted to go back to for housing was, or just to bring, to propose for an additional strategy, had to do with ADUs, um, which I've mentioned a couple of other times. Um, they, they could be such a, such a, a helpful way to increase supply of some missing middle units. Um, and they could be spread throughout all neighborhoods, which is part of the goal. And so I was, I, I'm gonna propose some language like ease uh, ease the process for the expansion of the ADU supply. Um, and I don't know whether that could improve, in, include exploring like a revolving, revolving loan fund so that people could capitalize adding the kitchen, the egress, the, the bathroom upfront and then repaying the city over a few years. Um, but you know, it's, it's not a s- it, it's not necessarily a really small, but I know we've only had a trickle of new ADUs since, since the laws were relaxed.
I second that suggestion, because I see it as a way that city could make, uh, we could make some additional tweaks to our tax incentive program that could potentially incentivize that as we did for the multifamily units. Uh, and that could be of, you know, low cost to us, but potential significant return.
Yeah, I, I would encourage um, uh, to the, for folks to work with, through the city manager to have conversations with HCD staff about the feasibility of something like that. And I would maybe actually interact with um county zoning, that kind of thing. So I, 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 it's, it's late right now and I don't have all of my brain cells still, so, but I would encourage um you all to have a conversation with the city manager, who can bring in our housing staff to kind of talk through logistically, whether or not that's something that's even feasible to do. All right. Okay, so in terms of next steps, thank you all for bearing with me tonight.
Madam, madam mayor, I have a point of information before we adjourn. What is the fate of the budget priorities resolution that we discussed? I don't think we, eh, for twenty twenty-six, uh, did we actually vote to adopt it? Because I don't.
We did, and I found that it, it, uh, the city clerk, we just realized it was not posted.
Yeah, okay.
So.
It wasn't posted? printed it out?
Uh, we, okay, no. It's.
The, the draft, it was on the agenda page.
The draft is posted, yeah.
No, now the um.
The final.
The final.
Well, I could email it to you, we're, we're a little.
We're between two websites right now, so.
I just looked for it and couldn't find the final, which is why I was inquiring.
I did the same thing earlier today and the city clerk, the clerk had to email it to me.
And I did it and, and I went to the resolutions list and it was there. Hold it. Oh. There you go. So when something gets basic, gets posted on.
So I think what. Uh, just as a quick heads up for folks, we are in between websites right now. So there, I, there are times when certain things are not popping up and other times when they are. And so, because I looked at the list of resolutions, it, it wasn't there, I didn't see anything.
This is, this is almost as good as yesterday, there was money and then there wasn't, and now there's money.
So, uh, so yes.
Okay, it's all on me. It's there somewhere, but.
Oh, no, no, no. I was with you. I sent the same email today. Yeah, I was with you. It's perfectly fine.
Um, mayor, seriously, I, I don't want the evening to end without saying that it's amazing that, that, how you facilitated this whole process this evening, which is incredibly complex, and, and I really appreciate all the, the front-loaded work that you did so that we could have what has truly been a delightful evening.
Oh, good. Uh, thank you very much. I thought that you all would be plotting my demise after this, but. Well, I appreciate that. Okay, so just to make sure everybody knows about next steps, please, 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 take a look, um, send your edits. Um, just to make sure that there's some information sharing, if you wouldn't mind, we cannot, open media act, we do not violate the Open Meetings Act. But if you send your edits, just make sure you share them with the whole council. Do not respond, but at least that way everyone has a window into any edits. Um, just to kind of help facilitate um any discussions that people may want to have as they're kind of thinking through options. Uh, if everyone can have your, your markups in um by COB Friday, that would be great. Um, and that would give. People aren't gonna get it until Saturday, but it's all good. I know.
Reminder.
I know.
Uh, yes, if we could.
You, you, okay, I'm already hearing folks say Saturday. Can we do Saturday? Sunday? Are you gonna make me work all, all Monday? What?
Oh, we can help.
No, we don't want to do that.
Okay, so if, if, can we do Saturday? If I could get the feedback by Saturday? Because I need it so that we can kind of finalize everything and then make sure that we have, uh, what we need for a possible draft resolution.
And the norms deadline is Friday.
The norms deadline is Friday.
Okay.
And did I hear somebody say something about financial?
Financial reports are due.
Thirty-first.
Everybody.
The campaign.
All right, there's a lot of stuff that's due. Okay, so with that, are folks okay with me closing this meeting? All right. Thank you all. Have a good one.